Just to let you know, two things. One, this meeting is being recorded. And Eva Mustafi, our fifth member, is joining us remotely.
Do we have to open in there?
Alright, so we have a lot to do tonight. And so I'll ask you to be succinct, not grieve, not cut yourself off, but just make sure that you realize we have a lot to do tonight. So, does anyone want to make a motion on the minutes from our last meeting? Or does anybody have any notes from the last meeting's minutes?
I have a few minor corrections that I won't bore the committee with that I can do. Nancy, they're not substantive. Other than that, I would move to accept.
Any second?
I think so.
A discussion? Someone will vote to accept them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's great. So, the first thing, this is very exciting. We have a student presentation. Not eight, several student presentations, so.
We were going to ask if we can delay this until the student arrives.
That'd be a good idea. Okay. Alright, so can we do, Sarah, Allison's here. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna go to item B, which is the CEF update on the Performing Arts Studio.
Absolutely.
Come on over. Thank you. This is Suzie Shaw.
Yes. Well, hello, my name is Suzie Shaw. 105, Captain Wilson Lane. I'm here on behalf of the Carville Education Foundation, or CEF, to discuss the Performing Arts Studio project. As you remember, we came before you last fall with a proposal for the CEF to donate funds to CPS in order to convert the mistake room into a dedicated space for the band. After many months of planning, the project was put out to bid in June, and CPS received no bids from general contractors. In coordination with the architect TBA, the project was again put out to bid this past summer. A few bids were placed. However, the bids were twice the original estimate done by TBA. The CEF did not feel appropriate accepting these bids, and TBA could find no good reason why the bids were so hot. In September, Sarah Wilson, on behalf of the CEF, engaged in talks with Justin Humphries of TBA. And in their discussions, it emerged that the CEF was planning to donate all the funds to cover the cost of the project. Justin realized that since no school funds would be used to pay for the project, the CEF would not have to go through the municipal bidding process, but could instead put the project out to bid in the private sector. Sue Prey and Sarah Wilson, on behalf of CEF, spoke with Debbie Anderson from the State Attorney General's office, and John Ronan, the General Counsel of the Department of Labor Standards. They both confirmed Justin's idea that CEF could legally and without issue donate a finished room to CPS. John Ronan noted that we would need to have prevailing wages, which is already included in the original estimate. We forwarded these determinations to Jim O'Shea, who then consulted with the CPS Council. It's our understanding that the school's council has agreed that the CEF can proceed in this new way. John Mativier, Carlisle Building Inspector, has also been briefed. We were not aware of this option at the outset of this project, but now that we are, it seems a more feasible and economically prudent course of action. And there is more flexibility in terms of materials and execution with a private general contractor. We have had some initial conversations with a few local TCs who are excited about working on this project. And pending a school committee approval, we will begin working to secure a contractor and start the construction process. And just to note, CEF board members will not be managing this project. There is money in the budget for an experienced onsite supervisor. The CEF will choose a board member to act as a liaison between the GC, Architect, and the school when needed. Additionally, Sarah Wilson, who has been instrumental in gathering all department information about the changes to this project, will step aside and not be involved in the details going forward. The CEF wants to be as transparent as possible as we move forward, and we want to avoid any conflicts of interest for Sarah, who is on both the CEF and school committee. With all this in mind, I'm here this evening to amend the CEF's initial proposal. Last year, we asked to donate funds so that CPS could build a performing arts studio. Today, we ask permission to donate a fully finished room to CPS. The execution will be different, but the outcome is the same. A new and dedicated space for the CPS band.
Great.
That's all.
First of all, I've been talking to Sarah about this for the last few days, and I have to say, I'm so impressed with the diligence that Sarah has put into this. I hesitated because I wasn't sure about how this all comes out in the end, but she literally ticked every box and checked every place that she could possibly do. All those things from making the project go out a couple months so that that would make it possibly cheaper. She's just done a lot to make sure that she's protecting the interests of the school and the interest of the education foundation. So, it makes me feel really good to say that I think this is a really great viable alternative. Couple things are, you'll have to work as though you were working with the state, a person who is, a company that was okay by the state to do this kind of project, to do like workman's comp insurance, prevailing wage, which you mentioned, the liability insurance, and then the quarry process. So, those are the other things that I'm sure.
The JCS we've spoken with are well aware of all of those points and have been apprised of the ways to report the PMS schedule, and we're working on, yeah, they're gonna start working with Justin, if possible, on figuring out exactly how to.
So, what this does mean is that we really, like Jim can't go in and say, oh, move that over there, move that over there. So, because they're gifting us the room, they give us the completed room. So, I'm hoping there'll be a chance for you to sit down with people at the school to find out exactly your dreams match our dreams.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, Kevin has already discussed, had the meetings with the architect. And the plans are going to remain the same, and the wish list is the same. It's literally just the execution of it. And then, yeah, if things do come up that weren't on that initial wish list, that were sort of overlooked or something, then that's where, you know, that liaison could sort of step in and communicate the school's needs to the architect.
Yeah, it's my understanding that it's not, it's not that we can't talk with the school. It's not that we can't talk with the school about, okay, the HVAC needs to be connected, whatever. It's that the school can't devote any resources to overseeing the project.
Okay.
That's, so Rob Furtado, right?
Yep.
He can be consulted about things, but he shouldn't be there every day making sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And the timing of the project, the same thing? So, they will be working with Jim and?
Yes. And we're hoping it all goes according to plan, which it often doesn't.
Yeah.
February would be a great time to get it underway.
Alright, another vacation, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the big thing to do is blast out. Okay, any other questions?
Well, thanks for creative approach to the solution. I was actually a little surprised to read the AG's verdict.
And that it's in writing.
Well, they actually gave us a favorable reading. But I remember, if I may be misremembering, but my recollection is the bids came in around 2X of what we thought. So, do you think you can close the 2X gap? Do you have any sense?
Yes. Yes. It's not gonna be the exact original estimate, it will be more.
But it's within the CEF's ability to, yeah. So, that's sort of a, sort of stinging indictment of the complexity of the municipal funding process, right? That means the schools, schools that cost $100 million could cost maybe $75 million if they cleaned up their process, right? So, that's a big deal.
Part of it was also that it is such a small project on the, in there, in this world.
Right, yeah.
That, because John Ronan thought that we actually were a $3 million project, not a $300.
But it's not, being small, it's small for the, either approach it's small, but you're saying that the people who specialize in municipal stuff don't want that.
You need, you need to make it worth their while to.
Yeah, that's fair.
To move themselves.
No, that's, that's fair. Thank you. No other question.
I have a question about the schedule. So, you were proposing to start during February, school vacation, and about how long would it take to complete the project?
I believe it was supposed to take around two months. Six to eight weeks. I, I don't want to be quoted per se on that, if I don't have the proposal in front of me.
Okay.
But it wasn't a lengthy project either, in that.
That's great, thank you, and thanks for letting me talk about it. Eva, do you have any questions about the music ramps? She's still there?
Eva?
Hello?
Oh, yeah, so it's like, I don't know if you can make a, like, a ramp or going in and out. So, yeah, it sounds like a very small project, and it sounds like the contractors are coming forward. You know, they have to have their afterwards, this new project, to fall for that. So, if we go outside of the bidding, there won't be much difference in terms of the quality of what, right?
Oh, no.
Because it's set up at the project door. It's basically just, to take over by that.
Yeah, because the CEF is gonna be totally all over it.
Yeah, the architect threw up the specs, so the specs may, there may be one or two tweaks, but the specs are the specs, and that's what they would be building.
Yeah. Yeah. The contractors will adhere to the specifications of the materials and the equipment needed for the project.
And one can argue that somebody who's in town, who has kids in the school, has a vested interest in it.
And will they know the regulations of building a public building versus building residential?
Yes.
Yes, because some of them have experience in the commercial space.
Okay, thank you.
Are you talking about the fire?
Well, just because there are different requirements that you would do for a public space, a school space than you would for your.
And the architect works on municipal commercial projects all the time, you know, they're. So.
Buildings, yeah.
They'll have.
He has to approve the, yeah.
They'll have all that.
Whatever, plans get submitted, yeah.
Okay, great.
Do, do we need to suspend our usual practice? You looking for a vote of approval today?
Yeah, I think they need.
Oh, a need.
Or do we not need it today?
The sooner the better, because then we can, again, proceed rather quickly with finding and securing out that local contractor, but.
I'm okay with it. Eva, are you okay with voting tonight?
Yes, I am.
I am too. So, shall we, shall we do a roll?
Well, we have to move to waive our usual. So, I move to waive our usual practice.
Roll, roll call.
Right, but first I have to move. So, I move to waive our usual practice of deliberation on matters to be voted in a subsequent meeting.
I second that.
Liar eye.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Zena?
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Sarah's gonna accuse herself, so liar eye.
Odeau eye.
Aye. Lavry eye.
Mustafi eye. Mustafi eye.
I heard it, did you guys hear it?
And now we can move to vote to approve these proposals that Ms. Shaw has suggested propose.
Okay, thanks, guys.
I second. Discussion. Roll call vote, liar eye.
Odeau eye.
Lavry eye.
Hey, Mustafi eye. You called back on my phone louder.
CEF, thank you so much. This is very, very exciting. You will not be deterred.
Don't they move?
Alright. And still she, and you have to, and she still does. Are our students ready? Dr. Mailer? Is there anyone there, Scott?
No.
They left. Alright, so Jonathan, so we could talk about the solar project, Jonathan, if you're ready. So, Jonathan sent us some great information about the charging stations.
Do you want to start with the actual solar stuff and the planning board, just to go?
Oh, yeah, that's right, go ahead.
Okay, good.
Alright.
So, the planning board met two weeks ago and approved the Ameresco solar camp project. There are, I think, I think there were too many things for you guys to be aware of that came out during the planning board sessions. One is, we didn't talk about it at this meeting, but the diagram that Ameresco showed involves some tree removal. And so, the tree removal is necessary because the trees would otherwise shade the canopies. And it's already built into our lease that they're allowed to remove trees that would shade the canopies. So, so that's all said. The thing is, they detailed exactly which trees need to be removed. And what the planning board did was allocated some amount of funds, up to $1,000, to be spent to improve drainage and replace those trees with lower growing trees. So, somehow, we need to decide what kind of trees to put in there, because we carefully did not have the planning board try to make that decision. So, something to think about, how you want to go about saying what should be put back there.
If this was conquered, we would have a landscaping subcommittee.
Now, no.
So, that's one thing to be aware of. The second thing is, the building commissioner decided that they could not put the electrical equipment within the 40-foot setback. And so, they relocated it to the island between the entry to the bus area and the main parking lot. It is in a much more visible location when you're driving into the parking lot. However, they agreed to screen it with appropriate bushes or whatever is decided. So, I don't think it would necessarily be a huge eyesore, but it is different than what you guys saw before. So, the way the planning board worded it is Ameresco can put it in the new location in the island, or if the school committee disapproves of that location, then Ameresco can go to the zoning board of appeals and try to get it put back in the original location you approved of. So, it's up to you guys to think about whether the new location is acceptable, or if you really want it back in the other place.
So, where's the new location?
It's in the, it's in the grass cabin right next to the place where the carpool places are parked, the carpool parking. There's a little grassy area between.
So, initially, it was when you came into the lot, it was gonna be right to the left.
Right. Yep, it's just gonna be off to your left, kinda hidden in the bushes there.
And now it's gonna be?
And now it's gonna be right, when you come into the parking lot, when you come into the parking lot, it's gonna be on your right. So, kinda as you're pulling into the lot, your headlights will shine on it. Yeah, the big hill is there.
So, kind of in front of the ramp? Yeah. In front of the ramp that goes up to the.
Yeah, there's a stair, a set of stairs right there, right in, right by the carpool parking, right by that set of stairs.
Shannon, I have it here if you want to see it.
Yeah, there's a, there's a diagram.
So, it was gonna be over here, but now it's gonna be.
How big is it, Jonathan, how big is this box?
It's 26 feet long, so it's gonna consume a substantial amount of the area.
What is it?
It's four or five pieces of electrical equipment. So, there's, I think, two transformers. Yeah, there's a DC to AC converter, a couple of transformers, and something else.
Was that the, just out of curiosity, was that the size in that depiction that we received from graphics? It was, that was 26 feet long?
Yes.
Does it, does it hobble or anything?
That was actually a question.
Different times of the day.
So, generally, no. But if it was a very bright sunny day, then you would get, you know, close to the, past the other thing, and then you would see it.
So, was the reason for moving because of that?
No, the reason for moving was because the bylaw actually states you can't have it within the 40-foot setback. And so, the building commissioner said, the only way to do that is to go to the zoning board of appeals.
But you don't want to delay the.
They don't, so the way that the board, the planning board arranged it, nothing needs to be delayed because the planning board essentially approved both locations.
They just wanted us to have a chance to weigh in on it.
Yeah, so you, so you guys can weigh in.
So, where would we move it if we?
The only two places the planning board will allow is the original location.
I thought that was the one they said no to.
Yes, but if the zoning board of appeals says yes, then you're okay.
Which one's original?
Jonathan, can you come here? I don't want to do the wrong thing. So, where was it? This is, over here is where it was gonna be, right?
Yes, it was gonna be right here. So, this dotted line is the 40-foot setback. This is, this is Church Street. So, as you come into the lot.
It's gonna be in here.
Yeah, it was gonna be right in here, like right over. Yeah, and there's a nice spot there without any trees, that it would work great. So, they couldn't do it there, because it's within this dotted line. So, the new location is here.
And what's the third, is there another?
There is not.
Originally, I think it was gonna be over here.
It was gonna be right up here.
Oh, oh, where it's bad. Okay, no, that's not good.
So, they'll end up having to, you know, manage the grade here or put the thing in, because they need like a 26-foot by 12-foot area.
Flat, yeah.
Flat.
You have a rock lined fence or something to grease it up?
There'll be some concrete abutments, I think, to hold back the land.
But the kids climb.
Oh, well, so, so, planning board, I think, was assessing that it's far enough away that it's still, the kids aren't gonna be climbing, because they'd have to cross the bus area to get in.
Not during school.
Not during school. Well, the fact is, it's not, they're over there anyway.
That's a separate issue right there.
Yeah, it's not traction, it's an attraction.
How high is it, Jonathan?
You know, they had a diagram in there somewhere that had that. I don't believe it's very tall, it's.
Yeah, and how many tree, what, taking out the trees related to that?
Nope, taking out the trees is completely separate, it's always under the fence.
Weird. So, before they would like to know.
One trees or two? Oh, let me get that map out for you. They were.
No, they're ones that were planned when we redid the school, so, yeah.
They were over here, right?
It's these.
Oh, there they are. Do you want to see this?
No.
Oh, right in the.
Yeah, so it's, there are two in the parking lot that are gonna be underneath the canopies, and then there's these right up on.
This is the road.
Because both roads are shady.
Pretty much against the whole thing.
So, Jim, I don't know.
So, I'm just looking at the aesthetic for the town, right? This is, this just feels like it would be a more discreet place to put it. I think this creates a body. You just pull in and you're like, what is that? Monstrosity. I just get that sense.
I had the same initial reaction. And then they said they'd screen it nicely with bushes, so if it disappears and you got, then you're looking at next bushes, maybe not so bad.
Yeah, that's what, I'd have to see. They had a nice graphic in the last one, the place got very discreetly, and it looked nice, it was set off. 26 feet and how tall makes it more questions.
So, you know, I would recommend you guys ask them to give you a rendering of what it's gonna look like. And have them do that for.
So, you're saying it's not holding up any?
It's not holding anything up right now.
So, we could, we can go get more. So, we should ask or you should ask?
I can ask on your behalf, or you guys, Christine can ask.
Yeah, you could ask for rendering. I just.
I'll tell them that you.
You're better, I'll contact you to find a who to contact, and then I'll.
Yeah, I know. Okay, I'll take that action for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. What's that?
One of you guys, the zoning board. How far out of the 40-foot is it?
It's right on the edge, in fact, some of it's, so they probably. There, there was a voter at the planning board meeting who was not in favor of having it in the, in the area. You know, within that 40, so that would take that into, the zoning board would have to take that into consideration. The Ameresco did not discuss it with them, because they already had to move it. But the concern was if it's up on top of the hill in the 40-foot setback, then it would be visible to everyone, you would hear the hums whenever there's homes, et cetera. But I believe also there was planning on being embedded into the grounds that it was level with the parking lot, not level with the top of the hill. So, I think it's, I think actually most spots are reasonable, from my opinion, but you guys are the ones that should make the decision, so.
Alright, so if you can get those renderings out.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
So, should we move into the charging stations?
Yes, please.
Alright.
Okay, so I sent you guys an update. I guess the summary is, I've gotten lots of quotes on, on what we could do. And I've been coordinating with Eversource and Tim Goddard, and we've got an ED make-ready application going. So, there's lots of things in motion. I guess critical parts are, Eversource will not begin the process of assigning a contractor until we pick an installer. And so, we can't go and like get everything set up and then say, now does the school committee approve this complete project? We need to at least have the school committee say, we would like you to use this installer if we move forward. And then, we would go tell Eversource that, and they would actually start moving then. And we would start to get things like timeline, you know, who's the actual contractor gonna do the work? How are they gonna manage, you know, interaction with the school? Do they need to do it during school hours? Are they gonna try to do it, you know, when you're on vacation? All that kind of stuff can't happen until we pick an installer and they pick an infrastructure contractor. So, that's an interesting catch-22 for us here, because I would prefer to present you a complete project and say, let's do this, what do you think? But that's not the way the utility works.
But is really that, I mean, I saw your email, so you listed three installers, and there's some different prices, but if we set price aside and just say installer will install, can we just evaluate it as if you had chosen an installer and then?
Yes.
The project itself doesn't, is the same regardless of installer or price, right?
Yeah.
So, can't you still do what you want to do and just, you know, choose, choose? Installer is a second order of choice after we approve the project?
Yes, so I, so if you can approve the basic framework for the project, like the spots you outlined are good, the, you know, the nature of the charger. One of the big things that I do want to be clear on is there was discussion on public access in the last meeting.
Right.
So, the Green Communities Grant requires that the parking lot that the charger is in be publicly accessible.
But we can restrict the time.
So, yeah, so we need to be a little careful on restrictions, I wouldn't want to violate their rules. So, my recommendation on how to manage this is, with either one of the vendors, you can arrange for different people to have different charging rates. And so, anyone that is a school staff person, you could essentially have them register, and they would give one charging rate. And anyone who is not a school staffing person, we could give them a different charging rate. And it could also be arranged per school hours. You said this is when the.
I might say it differently, if they want. You're saying, you don't think we can simply say no non-CPS charging for these hours?
I think that might, I mean, that would run the hairy edge of being.
Well, but the problem is not, the problem to me is that parking's kind of at a premium right now.
Yep.
It's gonna be, we're gonna lose a few spaces, we don't know how many, but some.
No, we're gaining three.
We're gaining?
Yes. We're going from 89 to 93, 92.
But still.
And how many of these are charging?
Two of them will be charging.
Alright, so you're saying, then maybe I'm not as concerned. I'm concerned that the scarce resource is parking, not something else.
Yep. So, I can tell you that the town of Chelmsford, this is how they manage their charging stations. They, essentially, they charge, I think it's 18 cents per hill a hour. And then, if you're there more than two hours, they charge you an additional dollar an hour for sitting there.
For sitting, oh, okay.
Yeah. So, it basically becomes prohibitively expensive to sit there for more than two hours.
Especially for carilligans.
Right. But for, for example, so we could arrange to have it be during school hours, everyone would have to pay, I mean, you could pick a number if you wanted to charge.
So, there's a way to, you're saying there's.
They could do that. So, so I think that might be a good way to, to manage it. But.
How does Chelmsford manage people just parking in the spot?
I don't think they do anything about that.
Are they at the school, or are they just in the town?
No, there's one at the town hall, there's another one, yeah, there's another one or two at their library, and then there's a couple more somewhere else in Chelmsford, I think.
They don't ticket them or anything?
No. None, I, I don't know, I haven't actually gone to see them.
The fourth hour is $500. No.
No, but you have to be plugged into that, you could just go in and take a spot.
Oh, right.
Full of pop darts, bye.
That could be now, right? I mean, honestly, somebody could pull in and walk, if they wanted to, why would they want to? But they could.
I guess I'm just looking at the usefulness of the charger, if people are just using it as a parking spot.
But why would.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, people that don't need to charge, use it as a parking?
And I'm not worried about.
You could say hybrid vehicles, all that.
Yeah.
In fact, I was gonna suggest to you, you've got three spots in the carpool area that say low emission vehicles.
Right.
We could just reroute those or two of them over to the spot. So, I'm actually not worried about people, because if they're parking there, right? They're either there for school business.
Yeah.
Right? And if they're there for school business, you want them there for school business, independent of whether they're charging. So, right? So, I think that's fine.
I just know schools and parking lots can create management challenges for principals and superintendents, like that we hadn't planned on when all of a sudden it happens.
But I mean.
I'm not, it's not a big concern.
So.
This is a baby step towards sustainability and.
Right. And I know. Right, and, and I don't, I don't think it's a good idea for us to put a sign on it that says, you know, EV charging only, EV vehicles only, you must be charging to be sitting here. I think that's all the wrong point, right? The point is that this is a school parking lot, and you happen to have a car charger, you're not the other way around. So.
I think so.
Um, so I did give you a diagram. Um, that shows what I consider a primary and an alternate spot. Um, and so that's the way I've been talking about it with the contractors. Uh, new information has come up since then. Um, so the place that I listed as primary, when we add more onto that, it's gonna go underneath the solar canopy.
Oh.
And then we're gonna have conflicts with where they're gonna put the support for the solar canopy and where we wanna put the charging stations. So that's not necessarily the best choice, what I have been listing as the primary. The difficulty with what I listed as the alternate is the parking lot is moving some number of feet, and we have to put in the charger before the parking lot moves.
Right.
So we have to guess where the parking lot will be in order to put the charger in the right spot. Um, but, I mean, generally speaking, I would like feedback, you guys think these are two reasonable spots, and do you have a preference on one or the other?
Actually, it was, um, thinking about, the whole forward-looking nature of the project is, you're thinking about ten years, twenty years out, and there's gonna be more cars.
Right.
So this one, actually, to me, that accommodates the possibility of more cars charging, so I actually prefer that.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, it's, because we're so very little far away along with this from, from an Eversource perspective, they're perfectly happy to have us move that, so.
And that looks like a predictable location.
It is, it's probably actually also less money for Eversource because they don't have to trench as far. So.
Amazing, chief. They should.
So I'm just, it doesn't create any strife when we're all in agreement, anyone can park anywhere, I think that's a great location. It's close for them, room to expand, and, and it's not in the closer parking spots that people will.
Yeah. Gravitate.
Take more readily, right?
Yeah. In fact, if you want, I could have them put it as far away from the building as possible, right?
Oh, there you go.
That'll increase the availability for people who wanna charge.
Yeah. So, so that would make them happier because that gets it closer and closer to the electric pole, so, um.
With the one, what you call alternate?
Yeah, it's the alternate and then the far north side of the alternate, so it's supposed to the top of your page.
But as Shannon told, we could add more later, we can add more later.
Yes, yeah, in fact, uh, when Eversource designs this out, they usually design it so that there's enough for ten cars in the future, which that happens to have ten spaces.
Nice.
I think that's great, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is an awesome report too, by the way, the level of detail that you went into, and careful and thoughtful.
I, I will say that Christine was on me to like get you that information.
Well, it's very good. The dog. Just when he's walking the dog.
That's right. Um, so, so location was a key thing. Um, whether you wanna proceed, I think is the number one key thing, so I'd like a real read on that. Location, the public access.
Yeah.
Um, and then there were two more questions that I had, one was installer and vendor. Oh, and by the way, all of these end up costing more than what we currently have in Green Communities.
Right.
So, the Energy Task Force is gonna have to, uh, make funds appear.
Okay.
Um, based on my conversations with other members of the Energy Task Force, we believe we can either move Green Communities grants money and grant money around in order to do it. Um, or the Energy Task Force has a small budget that's potentially be used for this.
So you, so you think that the cost to the school will be nothing?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And, and the whole cost is coming in at ten thousand or less?
Uh, so, Green Communities will only cover up to ten thousand, um, and so anything that were to go above ten thousand would have to be covered by the Energy Task Force budget.
Oh, okay.
So.
But it doesn't look like from your numbers that they're really anticipating a lot more than that?
No, the only thing that I didn't list in these numbers is there's a special, super extended warranty that ChargePoint provides. Um, and if we were to do five years of that, that would be like another two and a half thousand dollars. Um, but then, literally, nobody in town would ever have to touch the thing, ChargePoint would take care of everything. So, there's certain advantages to that. Um, and so, in selecting vendor and installer, we mentioned vendor first. So ChargePoint versus EV Box are really the only two viable alternatives. Um, the feedback that I've gotten says that ChargePoint is very easy to use, very easy to manage for both people pulling up to use it and for the people who have to maintain it. Um, it's a little bit more difficult with the other one, and so we probably have to have more expertise in town, so somebody like Rob Furtado or Tim Goddard or somebody like that would have to become a little bit more of an expert in how to manage a car charger if we went with the second choice.
Which is EV Connect.
Option two, which is EV Box, um, versus with the first choice, or option one of, uh, ChargePoint. Um, so, for example, ChargePoint will do things like automatically maintain, they base, they ping the device every once in a while to make sure that it's still alive. Um, so they just do that kinda stuff to make sure that the system is always up and running.
So Vol Trek is an installer?
Yes.
And ChargePoint and Al is the?
ChargePoint is the kind of.
Kind of, so the installer is equipment agnostic or not necessarily?
Yes, the installers are almost all equipment agnostic, although everyone that says that, they'd immediately say, we prefer ChargePoint.
So there's no reason not to take, there's no reason not to take ChargePoint.
Uh, so the only reason is, uh, the financials come really close.
Yeah.
Um, the original pricing, uh, actually makes ChargePoint the better deal. Um, however, the EV Connect guys, um, are, are dropping their price by a hundred dollars a year, so that makes it potentially a slightly better deal.
We're in the hundreds of dollars difference, right?
Right, per year.
Yeah, and this one is almost, sort of means it's free because they sort of checked it.
They kinda take care of it, yeah.
That's a big piece.
It is, I think it is a big piece, 'cause you really don't want people trying to use the charging station coming up to the school and talking to the front desk, like, I can't make that work, can you help me? I mean, that's, I do not think that's what you want.
No.
And, and if you, my understanding is if you have a ChargePoint station, if you're there at it, you can get ahold of ChargePoint and they'll face it revolve.
Right, okay, it's better.
Okay.
Um, so, so the vendor is one thing, then the installer, I have three different installers, Vol Trek, Commonwealth Electric, and Aetna. Um, Vol Trek came in at the best price by a fair amount. Um, Commonwealth Electric came in at the highest price.
Mm-hmm.
The potential advantage from Commonwealth Electric is they're also certified to do the Eversource part, and so the town would only have to deal with one installer rather than first Eversource and then a second installer. Um, but the difference in price to me is so large as to, I, I think Commonwealth Electric, I don't know that I could get enough budget out of the, the Energy Task Force to make that buy.
Okay.
Um, so.
Right.
I'm good with option one.
Yeah, well, all right, so.
So what do you want from us, a vote, to, uh?
Uh, yeah, so I, I send along a proposed motion where you have to fill in some of the things.
He is the one, isn't he?
Yes.
Absolutely. So.
It's my neighbor, I have it right here.
Yeah, so, so the parts you need to fill in are which option number you'd like to select.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
And then list out that it's Vol Trek and ChargePoint if that's what you wanna go with.
Yeah.
List the fact that you would prefer a preference to what I listed as the alternate location.
Yeah.
And then I added some wording in here so that this is not a done deal, you're not signing off on it. I'd like to be able to get all the information from Eversource and come back to you and say, this is the done deal now that we've selected all this, do you fully approve? Okay? Oh, I think this was a separate, you know, I'll just send it.
I sent it to.
Everybody, did you follow most of that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
It was in email to today, the.
Yeah, to today.
Yeah. All right, so.
Uh, did you send it to?
I did.
Okay.
No, I got it, yeah.
So, doing the, uh, the motion.
You did it.
Have they read it?
Okay, I'll do it. Um, so I proposed the motion, I move that we forward with proposed EV car charger project in the school street parking lot by selecting.
Vol Trek.
Option one.
Option, that's ChargePoint, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
ChargePoints and Vol Trek. Uh, provided the Energy Task Force can secure the remaining funds to complete the project and pending a future final approval by the school committee on the location with a preference for the alternate location, and on the project's timeline and installation details to ensure minimal disruption in the school's operations and to not interfere with the planned solar canopy installation or parking, parking lots repaving projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I need a second.
No, we didn't need to wave, well, I don't think we need to wave because we delivered it last week, last month? Or on this particular issue, do you think we should wave now?
I think we're good.
We, you heard about it last time, but this is the first time I've given you all the pricing.
The details, yeah.
Uh, we, right, we sort of sent you off to go get that, so conceptually, I think we're good.
All right, does anybody wanna second that, David?
I'll second it, uh, it's mad.
Discussion? Any, any questions or discussion? All right, uh, all in favor?
No.
Oh, rule called vote, clear eye.
Wilson, eye.
Lomri, eye.
Lomri, eye.
Very good.
Thanks, Evan. Jonathan, that was pretty cool.
Awesome, buddy.
Thanks, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, Christine, I took twenty-seven hundred minutes.
I know.
So.
He still live next to me.
Charlotte's head, that's good.
All right, so now we have our fabulous, worth-waiting-for student presentation. Hi, sorry. Elizabeth, go ahead.
Um, let me go check in the hallway.
She's here.
What's that, how about joining us?
That's my girl.
So I have with me, uh, two of our eight grade students, um, Elizabeth and, uh, Charlotte, and we're gonna share with you, uh, the school committee and the public, an example of project-based learning, and some of this came, some of the ideas came out of this book launch, which I'm happy to share. Some of our faculty read the book this summer. It gets at design thinking and it really has some of the, some of the tenants of, um, engineering, design. And I'm gonna walk you through a couple of really quick slides that I'm gonna turn over, uh, to our students. And behind us, you can see we have some examples of, uh, cardboard arcade challenge. Um, the framework here is very closely aligned with some of, uh, the Carlisle district goals. Uh, specifically, um, collaboration, student-centered learning, um, reflecting. And the public product piece right here, uh, that was the culminating event, which was last Friday, or two Fridays ago, two Fridays ago, yeah. In the cafeteria, which was really well attended, I thought. Um, so, the, the, the challenge, which I will explain and I can share this presentation with you later, um, gets at creating a intellectual challenge that is both engaging for kids but, um, rigorous at the same time. And that it is student-centered and it's reflective of authentic learning, as you can see. Um, what this involves, and I'm, hold on, I keep jumping back and forth, the old sin over here, um, is this eighth grade cardboard challenge night. And this came out of a, um, it's really a global challenge. Girls, do you wanna speak to it? 'Cause I, I don't wanna do all the talk in here.
Okay, sure.
You want you had, you need to turn it to us or?
Okay, um, I guess, uh, basically we did a event where we invited the school to come and we made over a few weeks of like projects that we wanted to share with the school. And we based it off of, I don't know, like Kane's Arcade, a short.
So, so we're not gonna watch the whole video here, but if you haven't seen it, Kane's Arcade is a story of a young boy, a couple a little younger than you guys, who created cardboard arcade games, um, and then it went viral. Um, so I encourage you to, to take a look at the, the video at a later time.
Okay, um, so we basically took our flex blocks, which were in our special, and we created games for the kids. And we each went and interviewed a classroom, and I got preschool and the case classroom.
Yeah, and I got, um, Ms. Graham's room and kindergarten.
Um, so this was like all our games that we did and the, like, the ages that we were designing it for, but we were also told to design it for all the grades too, why?
The, the neat thing here is that the students collaborated and they were various roles for this project-based learning activity. Um, and you could either be a game maker, a designer, we're both through game makers.
Yes.
Okay, so they, whi- which ones did you do?
I did that one.
I made this one and you did the.
And I did Candy World, which is sort of like a life-size candy world.
And you had two, three students working, four students working together?
Yes.
And so, that would be one of the roles, would be the game maker. And then some of the other students, and they self-selected, wanted to be prize makers. Um, so they used the 3D printer to make some, some toys, students brought in some examples of toys. Um, and then we had some other students that selected to be event makers, and those were, uh, in charge of publicity and just kind of logistics. You can see how, uh, afterwards you did a survey, correct?
Yeah.
You wanna talk a little bit of the survey, the reflection piece?
Um, so, we had a survey that sent out to everyone in eighth grade and we were, we were all supposed to tell about what we liked about it and if we wanted to continue with it. I personally enjoyed it, um, and everyone, I think, yeah, what type of maker you were. So, this is like the overview, I think, of like how everyone liked their position and what they got.
Um, so the event planners were in charge of publicity, and so one of our students wrote a letter to the editor, that was in the seat though. The other students, uh, served as greeters at the door, checking kids in, uh, managing the, the sales component of it. Um, but then, for, you can see they had different groups, and the groups would go and interview, um, specific age ranges, age range classrooms and ask the students what they would like to see in a game, and that helped inform the design process. So here's an example of your design, did you do this one?
No, I didn't.
And this one, okay, so this was the, uh, dark one, and you can see they interviewed, actually, this is the narrows classroom. So the students came, they interviewed your kids, they asked what designs they would want, and then there was a little bit of a back and forth. They then had a little thank you, and then they created the, the game to be, um, played with, um, students. So they involved younger students in that design process. Um, here's another example, this was, I don't know, it's easy for you to see, this is a, like a Ski Ball type game, that was a huge hit, I have a video of it. You see, it, they created prototypes, they would go talk to the students in other age, age ranges for design. The, the, the kids wanted a flame design, so you can see, this is a prototype, we're gonna have it, but in the video here, and hopefully it'll work. You can see, um, the kids throwing the little ball, and then it landed in a hole, and it came back by, um, track.
Amazing.
All built out of recycled materials. Um, it was a huge hit, I thought.
It's awesome.
Um, another one, actually, is this yours?
Yeah.
So this was your design that you, you did, and what, what grade was that for?
Um, it was for preschool and also the case classroom.
Oh, great. Um, there's another example of a project, oh, actually, here it is in the classroom, right?
Oh, look at that.
So, what were, how did kids play this game?
So there was a line that you were supposed to stand behind, and somebody would turn it in the back, and then the kids would try to throw it and hit the nines, which are the bad guys. Um, and then they were trying to save out of a dice, like, uh, animal, which would be their cat or a kitty.
So you, you interviewed the clients, you got some feedback, you incorporated their ideas in the final product?
Yeah.
Um, another example, and this is an interesting one, this is air hockey.
That's crazy.
This one was, uh, student-created again, um, but what you're about to see is underneath powering the whole thing is a student with a hair dryer.
Excellent.
So it just gives you an idea of the creativity.
I thought it'd be.
And then here is a whack of a wall with a little bit of a different flair.
Should, that should be teach.
You're really inspired.
A good old home, a good old home. Instead of the dunk tank.
But the implementation was, it, teachers did a lot of planning and with the students doing a lot of the, the work here. Um, you know, from setup to, to kids' manner, different shifts, to cleanup, um, to, we had some concessions, so there, there was a lot that went into this and I really wanna thank the eighth grade team of teachers, as well as the elementary teachers as well, for giving up their class time so that our eighth graders could go in. Um, but a lot went into this, but it was really student-centered. Um, and then afterwards, we did a little bit of reflection, this is what I was asking you about earlier, this is one student's, um, reflection here. You can see, it, it builds on, what did they, what did they do, but then also what did they learn? And, you know, we as a school, I'm sure we learned something about how to, how to do this and how to make improvements. Um, so that's all we'd like to share, are there any questions from the school committee?
Well, did you enjoy it? Was it a?
I personally liked it, it was. I personally liked it. It was really fun seeing kids, like, have a lot of fun with our games.
Yeah, it was really fun. I did get social event because I was sick that day. But, um, it was a great, like, experience of, like, time management, definitely. And, um, I think it was a very good experience.
What was the most unexpected thing that happened?
I think how many Flex Blocks we had, cause there was only like forty-five maybe?
Yeah.
And we were all like really surprised how quick we were supposed to make our games.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I was really, uh, the most unexpected thing was the turnout. It was really, really well.
When was it, what time of day?
It was Friday from three until seven. And it was when I went there about four fifteen, it was packed. And there were lines at all, the, the different.
Of course.
I, I, I'd like to make comment as a parent of a eighth grade, and I went to the event, not expecting a lot, quite frankly, cause it wasn't sold to me by my daughter too hard. But, it, it, it was, it might have been the most impressive student event I've seen in the, in the years my girls have been at school. In terms of achieving the goal of raising money, it raised a lot of money. The place was packed, packed with kids, uh, having a big time. The games themselves were unbelievable, the creativity, the ingenuity, um, really impressed to see what the, the kids built. And then I thought, you know, coming into this year with the Flex Blocks, how are these gonna be workable, they be useful? I thought it was a tremendous example of how you can use the Flex Blocks to do something that's educational, that checks all the boxes, and lets the kids do something very worthwhile outside of the normal curriculum. So, I was really, literally blown away by it. Um, great job by everybody.
Yeah, cause the kids did all the work. Nice job.
Charlotte, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, babe.
It's a good eighth grade team.
Eighth grade team.
So now, we will move on to the budget presentation.
We got a couple of minutes to set up, so if you wanna play the game, please, come down and play the game.
Hafner, H-A-E-N-R.
Sounds like the well company in Lowell, the big part of that? You know, the gas station in Lowell, obviously. It's old, famous old gas.
Well, good evening, uh, welcome. So tonight is our, is our first presentation of the draft budget for FY twenty-one. Before we get into this, so the, the presentation tonight, it may be succinct, as Christine requested, but it does represent a lot of time and energy that was put into this by a great number of people. So first name, faculty and staff, who contributed their thoughts and ideas to our principals and administrative team, Lori and Matt and Dennett, who brought their ideas forward as we craft the budget into. The members of the committee that contributed their thoughts and helped that up. And of course, the Scott Triola, our Fintown liaison. And, and this year, we also had the opportunity to be with Barney Arnold from the Select Board, who also came in, and I'll talk a bit more about that in a few moments. But, all of that and the presentation and all of those iterations worked with the person, I really have to thank for the presentation, and just bearing with me and bearing with everybody to the sucre, who made this all possible. It probably made five hundred iterations of the budget itself and the proposal, the presentation, so pretty serious.
In other words, the usual process.
Yeah, the usual. Um, just a couple of quick guides for us as we, as we went into the whole budget process. Our, our main goal is support maintaining multi-tiered system of supports for students. Um, you'll hear that throughout the night, whether it's this presentation, or our West Side presentation, or our global draw about the multi-tiered system of instruction and support. Um, one of those keys is instituting our math specialists for tier-two support at the elementary school. I'll talk a bit about the, the, the class sections in a minute, but many of you know that last year, well, actually this year, last year we made a decision for this year because of the class size and the creep in the class size, and the demands and profiles of the classes, we wanted to open up another section of our third grade class, we needed to do that. We didn't have the resources available to just do that on its own, so we did move our math specialist. Leslie Yankin took over our third grade class, she's a certified teacher in elementary, so that worked out nicely. But it is a, it is something we're lacking this year. Um, also wanted to make sure we create class sizes which reflect the district's guidelines and foster optimal learning conditions for students. That's a, that's a fundamental part of the experience that our students have, whether it's in eighth grade or whether it's in first grade, that class size, ability for students and teachers to develop really close relationships, and to do things in classrooms in a manageable way, so that's an important part of our goals. And also to develop a budget which is aligned with the school committee goals and the town gathers, because we don't do this in a vacuum, we have to do this in response, knowing that we wanna be physically responsible, and that the town has pressures on it, so we wanna make sure we bring all those ideas and get them up with a responsible budget proposal. So our, our, what that all boils down to, our proposal for FY twenty-one is an eleven million, eight hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred sixty-dollar budget for the town to fund, um, and that represents a two-point-nine-one percent increase. It took a lot of work looking at that budget to get it down to that place where we feel comfortable moving forward. And it represents, you know, our ability to do some of the things we want, but also trends on those areas where we might have everything we want. Um, that represents, uh, the compounded annual growth rate for that, the last ten years would be, uh, two-point-eight-two percent. That says the ten-year average, it was the actual the CAGR rate assumed with.
Yes.
So if you look at the chart, the, the columns, the, the bars, the bars represent the total budget. And you can see there's a, there's a red line around the period, which represents the increase year over year. So the last year, we had a three-point-one-five percent increase. This year, we have a two-point-nine-one percent increase in our proposal. But you can just see it the, it over the course of the past ten years. And of course, we go back eleven years, we, we start off with one year, we had zero percent increase, of course, we have another eleven, a little before it's.
I don't think it's actually zero percent, just that it was the starting point.
No, there was a zero in the beginning.
It was starting year before.
I'm kidding.
Kind of froze off averages and such too.
Don't get any ideas going.
So this is a, this is a graph we share every year, and it looks at our class sizes and sections. So we list our grade levels here in the left, in the left column. So this is last year, eighteen, nineteen, these are our actual grade sizes. So, you know, K in there fifty-seven students, third grade we had sixty-two students. The next column, we have the actual number of sections, and we say actually because each year we then project, it's the future. So the actual sections are listed here. And last year, we had a total of thirty-four sections, a total student room of six oh eight. And then we have our average class sizes here. Then, last year, at this time, we projected out for this year. And we used our own little homespun formula. And we projected we would have between five hundred ninety-one and six hundred nine students in the school at this time. And we were, our number right now was six hundred nine, we are right on that outer edge, and you see we're in the range, so we can look at ourselves and be correct. And these are actual grade sizes, I mean, we weren't pinpoint on at each grade level, but in its aggregate, it comes up as a grade size. And these are actual sections for this year. So you can see, we have good class sizes. Our kindergarten, we have three sections, average seventeen students. Our first, second, and third grade, we have four sections in each. Our third grade, our class size would have been pretty large, and with the profile of students that are in there, it would have been a, it's challenging right now for third grade, right, but it would have been even more challenging having stayed with the three-section班. So, last year, we had thirty-four sections. We were gonna have thirty-three sections here, but we increased it to thirty-four sections. And then, if you look down the bottom, this is a new piece, we also listed our FTEs, just to give a little more insight. So last year, we had sixty-nine point two FTEs in, in total. So that counts our general education teachers, our special education teachers, and our specialists. So our total FTEs is sixty-nine point two, just to give you a little, a point of reference. This year, we're at sixty-eight. So we've, and you say we're at sixty-eight, but we still have thirty-four sections. Yes, because we moved the math specialist out of being a specialist to being a classroom teacher. And, as we will rehire for some of our retirees, we lost a point-two section. We, we didn't need to hire a full-time person, so we took that opportunity to hire someone at point-eight to come in and be our, our world language teacher. So we're down to sixty-eight total FTEs for this year. Now, as we look at next year, so next year, we're again, we're using a similar formula, we've tweaked our, our numbers in the projection. So we are projecting that for next year, we'll have between five hundred ninety-four and six hundred twelve students. I know it's a, it's a good size span. And we are projecting that we would, what we're hoping to have, that was built into this budget, is that we would have thirty-four classroom sections. So, it's thirty-four classroom sections. It gives us a total FTEs, which would take us back to sixty-nine. And the reason we are projecting the sixty, the thirty-four sections, and we have it allocated, you'll see we wrote thirty-two plus two. We are in October, it's October, we're in October, and we're trying to get a handle on how many students are gonna be at which grade levels in May or June. And while we know we're gonna feel some class-sized pressures here, we think with the two, we don't wanna attribute those to any one place, because if we attribute them in one place, people might have a fixed mindset, say, well, in the presentation, you said there were gonna be four sections. Why aren't there four sections? And that, that can be a fixed mindset internally, and it can be a fixed mindset externally. Parents could say, I thought it was gonna be four. So the idea is, we know we're gonna have class-sized pressures here in the elementary school, and it, we want the thirty-four sections, we need the thirty-four sections to address those class-sized pressures, but we will make the, we'll attribute them to a grade at some point in the future, May and June, we have the better class. Of course, that doesn't make it easy for our teachers, who maybe, we might ask someone to go from third grade to fourth, or fourth, third, third second, but it allows us to make more logical decisions about class size and class section. So that's why we, when I look and see an increase from sixty-eight to six hundred fifty, we wanna move our math specialist back to being a math specialist, and we wanna be able to still address class-sized challenges. Any questions that we have in this piece? Oh, this is a lot of information. So, so what this represents really is some new conversations and collaborations we're having with, uh, the finance committee and the Select Board around, you know, just sharing more information. So the idea is, we, we, when I say we, Susan and I may develop this, wait, we didn't develop this. So, in collaboration with the finance committee liaison and the Select Board, and our committee representatives, and Susan, we took some information, formulated this as a document that will, will allow us to share this out, maybe in a quarterly fashion with the school committee, that will keep everybody apprised of our spending and how on track we are with our budget as we move through progress. So it's a lot of small pieces, but what this does, it breaks it down. It breaks our budget down into regular education, special education, student services, so that all our staffing is in one place, non-staffing is in another place, the facilities, information technology, transportation, and then our supplies and curriculum materials, just gives everyone a breakdown of what the funds are being spent in which areas. It allows you to see what percentage of the budget that represents. And also, because we have FY twenty, which is this year, and FY twenty-one, which is our budget proposal year, it gives you a chance to compare the two, and then the last column, it gives you the increase or decrease from FY from twenty to twenty-one. And I apologize, there's a lot of information squeezed in there, but it is, it's more of an operating document that we'll use and we can refer to. If we get down to the bottom, this is more information. We have our total budget, this is always interesting. So, if you look at our proposal, financial year, so our budget proposal is eleven, in the eleven, high eleven million dollars. But you can see our budget, the total budget is twelve million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. The next box down here shows our offsets, which is money we can put towards the budget. So the town's expense isn't the twelve million, it's the eleven, eight-nine-six-one-six at all, because of the offsets. Offsets are money we get back from the state for a circuit breaker. Offsets are some of the grants we have, offsets are fees that parents pay for kindergarten. So those offsets are working, decreasing the town's share of the budget. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question, actually, a Sky question. The, the chapter seventy money, that just goes right to the town, that goes straight to the town, right?
What is the chapter seventy?
That's the, um, s- state portion of the public school education.
Goes straight to the town.
And what percent is that typically aware of?
What percent of?
Well, I mean, just to be clear, so the grants and things, you know.
It doesn't factor.
No, I know, but what I, I mean, for the education of everybody, including me, the stuff here that's called budget offset, is stuff that comes straight to the school system as an offset. But there's a whole big pot of chapter seventy money that the town finance department and you guys use to balance your budget.
Yes.
That just goes straight into the town.
Yes.
That represents kind of an offset to this, this budget.
There's, on, on the other side, it's also.
Benefits.
Benefits.
Fares.
Yeah, there's, there's those items. And it's, it's a, the good point is that maybe that's something we wouldn't include in this, but we should have.
What we should have is a number, maybe for the, what's our meeting?
Um, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay.
I would just defer, cause we have the new finance director starting, closing the one.
Um, the other point, did you, maybe I missed it, I was talking to, um, the chair, but, did you talk about the contingency?
I did not talk.
Okay, cause that's probably worth explaining, since that's a new.
So now in this, so in the past, if you've been in the school committee, or like you didn't talk, you've heard a term's been used about prepay. In, in the past, we've taken funds that have been allocated for one year, and we have the opportunity to prepay some of our out-of-district expenses, and that's been used forward. And there's often been a question about how is, how are those funds used? Because it does create some, some perceived extra money in the budget for a year if you prepay for it, and you've allocated for all those funds in the budget, what happens to that? We could get into things that happen, whether it's power professionals, or plumbing problems, or, you know, there's a variety of different expenses that we didn't make into the budget that come up. But just the idea of being more transparent, I guess, in the word, in, in these updates, we will have that funding. So, we know that when we propose a budget, say, for next year, we have built in two placeholders for out-of-district costs. So we, I think we built that at eighty, eighty-three thousand dollars a piece, so there's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we've identified as placeholders in our budget, but we'll report on it as a contingency fund that we have there. Just like, right now, we have a number of people expending their families, which is wonderful, right? It's great for people expending their families, but for us, it means that people go out and leave, and then we have to pay substitutes that we might not have factored in. So, it's important that we have some of that flexibility, it's just, our, the approach is that we wanna make sure that everything is transparent. And I think through this forum, that, you know, when everyone's created, we should be able to share that information so everyone feels that they are in the know of how the funds are being allocated.
I have a question, Jim. I see that there are two facilities lying out here, actually, there's a facilities listed for four twenty-five K under staffing expenses, and then there's a separate breakout box for a total of five hundred fifty-seven K. I'm just wondering what, what is, why, what is the facilities and the staffing, and how's it different from the other facilities?
So, just as you said, right, we, what we tried to do is break out the staffing. So we have, so we have facilities and staffing. Yeah, so this staffing up here, this facility under the staffing component, which would be our staff, would be like Rob Fatano, where his custodians are.
Oh, it's the actual, actual.
Facilities department.
Uh, okay, so right, but I'm just a little aghast, because I, how many people does that represent?
Seven.
Okay, that's, that's what.
Yes. Which one were you aghast at the top, the staffing one or the one out of the facilities?
No, I, I, I was, I didn't realize that there were seven people on the facility staff in the school, and that's a.
So we have, yeah, we have seven people on staff, and then we have to cover when they have, when they are out sick.
Yep, no, I get it now.
Snow removal, which is always that extra, we have to make sure we, and all last year, we didn't have that much. I'm hoping to have the same, very little snow removal this year, but those are some of the things we're gassed.
Got it, thanks.
Abbott, did you wanna ask your question about sped transportation?
Yes, I, I achieved the, the, I'm not sure, um, I think that's like one of the sheets that you're looking at right now. Um, I think I printed out my, um, the logic presentation, I'm obviously, did the information, but I appreciate if there's like more information about how the, um, special education line is going, as we learn to be going into the web, and then, you know, um, uh, I'm looking at, um, uh, underneath the special education. So, as I understand the case, um, transportation, the transportation for students, special education is transferred from the, um, from the education team, correct? Is, is it showing in the budget?
Yes, it's di- it's different, like, as we discussed. So the regular transportation, we have a contract for, and we can project what it's gonna be years out. And I think with the case one, we get a notice, so there are some fluctuations there, yes.
But, um, so the, there's, so if there's a line item, I think, where she's asking, the transportation buses, that's regular item, right?
Yes.
Three ninety-eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Whatever, the four twenty, sorry.
Yes.
And then the case is up there in the sped line, right? And is there non-case sped transportation as well?
Non-case sped transportation, no.
No, okay. So, but is this case, they have a funny way of accounting, right? They do it in arrears and it's this and that. So this is just kind of an estimate, and the other one is contractual.
So FY twenty is actual.
Right. Do, do you follow that, Abba?
So, it's, it's not like, I think it's not the college, so which one is contractual?
Okay, so the, the one that says school, the transportation buses, if you look at the the chart, that's kind of got lots of lines in green and blue and.
Okay.
Down in the middle, there's bus transportation, that's four hundred twenty thousand. That's a contractually fixed amount. I mean, there may be some things, but basically, that'll be the price. Then buried in the sped box, which is the sped non-staffing, there's a line item that says transportation case, and that's a hundred thirty thousand. But that's an estimate, because they don't really finish their, I was explaining that to you earlier today. They don't really finish their accounting, uh, till, I don't know.
Well, the, the formula they use is really based on what they s-
Yeah, so it's an estimate.
They take what they're spending this year in transportation, and divide it up based on what we use two years.
It's kind of like a reverse circuit breaker. But anyway, so, but they do, I think it's, you're pretty close, right? You've got enough experience.
Abba, you also had your, the question you had about the budget with the special teachers, do you want to clarify that?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of, um, uh, teachers, I know that we're looking at, um, the, the, there is a looking at the common, uh, from, looking at all the projections. And I know that our, um, our students are being valued from year to year. Uh, we don't necessarily, you know, uh, have universal efforts of students that are always trying to figure out how to, how to predict the sections that have enough students. Um, and, uh, teachers, teachers, so that, so, uh, I remember we have moved a, a math teacher to fill in a gap, and, uh, we're gonna be looking at hiring a teacher. Um, so what is this, of this, you know, this common learning situation, um, calculates into a budget is that, um, since, you know, we are pretty much at the top of this, um, paying space scale, hopefully we can recruit teachers that, um, can have both, um, can, can have both, uh, sets of, uh, skills. So can be special education, uh, teachers and budget teachers. I don't know, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I, I know the point you're making, absolutely. Want me to try to reiterate?
Which will help our general education students, and, you know, this, this, you know, we are trying to address a, a, um, uh, the ways of, uh, learning, that way of learning, so having some skills, uh, coming in, uh, in one person where, where they can, you know, contribute to, spread achievements for, um, student across the board. That, that would be great enough, so. There's definitely, it's like, you know, there are, there are schools that we can really, uh, recruit from. Uh, or teachers that have taught at, you know, specialty schools, um, with, um, with that, that experience and with, uh, those skills. And that would help our budget in that. As they're finding evidence to set up, so.
All right, I, Abba, I'm gonna try to just paraphrase what you, I think the point you're trying to make. First point that I took away was, if, if the budget is approved, and we are able to increase that position, one, we should probably look not for someone at the top of the scale, and that's important. But two, look for someone who has some skill sets. I think you're referring to someone who may have some special education background, who can bring some of that skill to a general education classroom. So that, kind of along the lines of the UDL, as we try to design tier-one instruction with, with strategies that are embedded in it that will help all students access the curriculum. So I think that, what, what the profile of that person we look to bring in, you would recommend we look for someone that has some special education skill, strategy, experience. Is that correct?
Abba, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, 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 that's, that's totally.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for you guys to this document that you can barely see? The other presentation could be very similar, very small. So then, then we, again, just breaking down the budget in a couple of different ways. People ask for the different setups, and Sue's always bludgeoned the grading documents. So in here, it was really looking at breaking up our budget based on kind of contractual items. So we have compensation, so these are the salaries, admin, teaches, non-contractual. So when you say non-contractual, it's a, it's an all-encompassing catch group, whether it's, we're talking paraprofessionals, whether we're talking custodians, whether we're talking a diamond staff, whether we're talking our office personnel, there's a whole lot of different people rolled into that. And then we have other comp, so we have compensation, then we have other compensation, which goes to subs, early retirement, stipend in position, professional development, some, all, these funds are also allocated to our staff for a variety of different purposes. And that gives us our total compensation number, for last year, ninety-five, four-five, two-four-seven, and the projected budget for next year, ninety-eight, six-seven, ninety-five, four. And then we have underneath that our contracted services in our supply. So it's really saying, a lot of the spending we have here is contracted. Like, this is our staffing, we've already made a agreement, there isn't a lot of flexibility in those spaces necessarily. And then we can see, as a breakdown of budget, in the, the pie graph we have here. So we have total compensation in blue, we have contracted services in red, and then we have that little sliver of the pie, which is supplies, which usually is an area that when we need to contract a little, that's the space we find ourselves contracting in. Because the, the personnel are really a direct service to students. And sometimes we, if we're gonna shave someplace, we shave in the supplier. Does anyone have any questions around this? So then, we often, we share this, this is a traditional slide, this is our district comparison FY eighteen. Um, I will say, it's FY eighteen except for the bottom line, which is total spend expenses, special education. For FY, F fifteen, because that's the most recent data we can get access. But what it does, it shows some comparable districts. Comparable somewhere in our geographical area, somewhere more size, like Dover or Sherborn. More along the lines of where we are. General fund, what their budgets are. Then it will be lists grants, uh, revolving and other, which really is a, it's just another, it really doesn't factor into the whole budget. And the total to the town, our per pupil costs, you can see we're at twenty thousand, zero-five-three, FY eighteen. And that places us pretty squarely in the middle of this group that we're looking at here. Administrative instructional leadership costs, we're at ten point two percent. And that places us, again, pretty squarely in the middle, it's maybe down the bottom half of that. And then, direct services to students. As I said just a moment, fifty-seven point one-nine percent of the budget goes as direct services to students, which in comparison to other districts, that's the largest percentage of any of the towns we compare to that goes to direct services to students. And then we have our total special education expenses down bottom, which again, puts us in the general pregnant section. So that's the budget presentation. And I'm happy to entertain any questions. There are one more slide that we've added to this part. But before we get there, is there any questions on any of the slides you guys just looked at?
I'll just make a comment, I think. A lot of good work by the team. And I, I just want to refer back to the, I don't know, two slides ago with the pie chart. Just to emphasize the point, people notice, but out of an eleven, almost a twelve million dollar budget, approximately eleven and a half million of it are things which we have minimal control over. We have collective bargaining agreements with set compensation levels. We have contracted service contracts with set pricing levels. And we have, you know, fixed cost of operation kind of thing. And then we have non-contractual employees who basically, their carload of ways to make sure that they're treated the same way as those who are in bargaining. So there's a lot that's constrained, and the team has to work pretty hard to make sure that it all works. So, you know, my compliments to you.
I, I would add to that, I think coming at our two point nine one percent increase represents a lot of work, and when it's really looking very closely and seriously at what we have. And I think this budget meets the three goals that we started off with. Our ability to provide a tiered, multi-tiered system of instruction and support. Our ability to maintain class sizes that are along the lines of the guidelines, and we think it's fiscally responsible. Now, there is a new slide, the bottom end. So this is something new for this year. We haven't always rolled this into the, the budget presentation, but this is our long-term capital proposals for FY twenty-one. So if you haven't seen this chart before, we list kind of our long-term capital needs coming down the left column. And then across the top of the, of the years going up into the future, into the day. And we try to, we try to spread out some of the, the long-term capital pieces that we need, and we try to plan for the future. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't work, right? Because there's lots of push and pull with the town and where we get funding, and sometimes we kick the can down the road, and sometimes we get kicked down the road. We're feeling that this year, that's a lot. Um, but across the top, technology replacements, that's been viewed historically as a capital expense. So we've, we've asked the town, and we've received eight thousand dollars for that capital investment in technology each year. The next item here is a simplified fire alarm system upgrade, twenty-eight, seven, five. If you recall from last year, this is the second half, it was a, it was a package. It was a two-year, we spread the cost out over two years to replace the panel and to upgrade the audiovisual signals in a section of the building, so that's incorporated yet, that's. And then replace the tractor, we have two tractors on site that we use for all types of grounds, maintenance, snow removal. One tractor is in good condition, and one tractor's really just kind of held together with rubber bands and chulunga. So we're looking to replace that tractor for next year. This green, this highlighted area is the HVAC. So again, if we went back a couple of years, there are a number of different project, HVAC projects, from looking at the air conditioning of Wilkins buildings, to the Corry units, and Grantly. There's a variety of HVAC, large projects that were on the long-term capital plan for years. And last year, we had a conversation with Long Term Capital, and it was determined that we would put that up and have someone look at it, do some engineering, and come back to us with a plan of how we might take care of the HVAC needs in a comprehensive way. So we haven't got that report back, it's estimated that we sh- it could be, we got a, we got an interim report, but it's not, doesn't give us the information we need. So it's projected might be another month before we have that.
Did you feedback to them where you found it lacking, the interim?
They just gave it, they gave us an interim, and if you looked at it, it was, it seemed like all the pre-work, you know, anything.
That you already knew.
Everything you already knew, and the important numbers and all those, the important information was always blank. So it was an interesting thing to receive, but it really wasn't helpful at all. So we really need to, to do the work and get back this. But we want to make sure that that is there. We don't have a date, because we know, we're not sure if this will come, how it will come back, whether it'll be one massive project, or whether they'll, they give us advices how we should approach it, and how we might break it down into component parts. But we're waiting for the study to come back. And then you can see we move it out into additional years, FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three. And we try to see things that'll come in the future, but there's also things that just jump out to us after, that may not be in there. Any questions about the long-term capital proposal? Are you ready?
So the twenty-eighth is an open meeting, right? That's a posted meeting for both committees, or?
No, I think it's just a internal.
Posted. Posted, so, but if we go, we, we need to post, right? We should post. So that everybody had a think on, I mean, school comp can go if they want. What time are we?
Um, it is twenty-eight.
Like seven?
Seventy-five.
Do you have, if you catch that, twenty-eighth or something?
We put it on the send today, is it the twenty-eighth?
Yes, twenty-eighth. We'll, we'll make sure it's supposed to, we'll make sure it's supposed to be for the time.
Okay, very good. So we can call that that, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, so, that was good. Uh, now we will have the West Ed presentation.
I'm sorry, uh, pretty, just, I, I don't know if that, it, this one was mine from, uh, from, from the presentation, because I'm sorry, I'm following. The kind of public school enrollment projection for FY twenty-two, twenty-one, was it one total pre-K two, two eight? The thirty-two plus two, was that addressed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Abba. All right, go, Jim.
All right. So, um, now, I want to, I apologize in advance, because the slide's kind of really small running without a reason to. So, at the end of last year, actually midway through last year, we had a number of, I'm gonna present an overview of the findings of the West Ed report, which we had done at the end of last year. It was a review of our special education services, programs. And, um, we, we brought West Ed in, which is an organization, we had them do the review. And this is a report on their findings. So I'm really just repeat, repeating out or parroting what their findings were. So the overview is kind of, I'll give you a little information introduction, I'll talk a little bit about the methodology they use, their results, their recommendations, and then our next steps. When I'm done with this presentation on West Ed, Lori Bruce, our new director of student support services, will also share kind of her entry findings and, and talk about how her findings and the West Ed report can come together and help, may help guide us and guide her in our work. So, enter that, why conduct such review? The influences. So if many of you may recall, I'll try to paraphrase here. Last year, we had, there were a number of opportunities, two of them took place right in this room, where the idea of bringing someone in to do a review of our special education program services was put forward. One of them, recall that, the committee was sitting over there, we had a big meeting, and the wall was open, and we had a couple of presentations. And that put, thought was put forward. And in another setting, as we kind of got together to discuss the search for the new director of student support services, we thought that that might be something that would be beneficial, be helpful, be helpful for us, to be helpful for whomever may come in and narrow. So that was kind of the impetus for looking and conducting a review itself. And then why we selected West Ed? Well, just recently, last year, Concord and CCHS had just completed a similar review. They worked with West Ed. They found them to be professional and a good organization, and they liked the results they got. So they recommended to us, they did some research, looked into the company, did something they specialize in, so we brought them in. And then the review was conducted, it was conducted in May of two thousand nineteen, last year. All right, so here's where the writing gets really small. So the methodology, so what they came in for, and, and we, we'll talk more about the, the report in its entirety after the presentation, but we've shared the report with the school committee in its entirety. And we even shared the first draft of the report in its entirety, yeah. But in the report, they get into, they talk about the major evaluation questions and the major areas of focus. The major areas of focus are the continuum of services we offer here, our multi-tiered system of supports. They look at our finances, and they look at student results and outcomes. And then they break each one of those down, and they ask particular questions on each item. Some of the examples here. Some of the examples here, what is the current model of special education services? What is the continuum of supports available to students with disabilities? What is the district's capacity to provide a full continuum of services? What is the quality of specific programs or the types of services delivered, delivery models? To what degree are services effective in meeting IEP goals? Now, just jump down some of the questions on the multi-tiered system of supports. Is there a multi-tiered system of supports in place for academic and social-emotional needs? Does that system have database decision-making, have its database decision-making instruction? Does it have a means to provide differentiation, differentiated instruction? Does instruction reflect evidence-based practices? Some of the other questions. Does the system have criteria for evidenceation? In the world of finance, to what degree are special education resources being used in a cost-effective way? In what ways may costs be reduced while continuing to maintain high-quality programs and services? And then questions, major evaluation questions on the student results and outcomes. How are students with disabilities performing on state assessments? To what degree are there discrepancies between students with disabilities and non-disabled students on state assessments? And are skills gaps closing for students with disabilities receiving special education services? And then another camera, professional development. What type of professional development supports exist for job embedded support through professional learning communities, grade subject teams, and our coaching and mentoring? And what professional development supports exist for providing differentiated instruction to diverse learners? So that's, those are the major questions they ask to gather the information in their methodology. But they also have some other things. They look at data collection, they review school documents, they use school and district accountability data on finances and academic achievement that are available through the DESE. They also conduct classroom observations and focus groups and interview data. So we'll talk about the focus groups in a minute. And they conduct an IEP review. So they look at the IPs, not all of the IPs, but they take a sample set and look at the IPs to get a sense of how we work with IPs. So I want to, I want to talk to a bit of a situation that we have, because I might as well address it at this point in time. So we talked about the different methodology, we have all those evaluation questions, and then we have these other pieces of data collection. So as many of you may know, I presented this to our staff last week. And we talked about it, and in that presentation, it was made clear that the information from the focus groups, so some of this data that was collected, like IPs and looking at all this accountability data, that's not necessarily included in the report. But the information from the focus groups is all in the report. And our faculty and staff who were at the meeting demonstrated some concern and anxiety because there were multiple focus groups. There were many focus groups, there were parent focus groups, but internally, there was faculty and staff focus groups. Some of them were grade-level parent professionals, but not really. There was middle school parent professionals, there was elementary parent professionals. Then there was grade level, then there was special education. Then there were groups where there was just, you may have a group and the information might have been identified as coming from one or two individuals, like if you're in a really small group. And all of a sudden, people felt anxious that they may or may not have been represented as they would like to have been represented in those focus groups. Not only the information they shared wasn't correct, but just sometimes the tone of the theme I may come across or whether remarks might be attributed to an individual or not, that created some concern and consternation. And I get it, because as we read our, we read our pieces, we were like, I don't know if that represents how we felt. So, so we ran into this issue because I know, I get the sense that we would like to share this report out so that people can look at it and see it. But I have reservations around sharing those 17 pages. It's probably a 93-page report, there's 17 pages of focus group information that I have reservations about sharing that directly. I've contacted Sylvia Duruvo from WestEd to talk about how we might manage that. So we might be able to manage that where she could aggregate that information and make it, present it in a way where it might, it couldn't be so easily attributed to people and that may present differently. Or if we publish it, like I said, the school documents, they're not published in the report. Or the classroom observations, that might not be there. There's other pieces from the methodology that aren't in there. If we felt comfortable, we might just take those 17 pages out of the report. There's no secrets. The information that was shared was wound into the recommendations where the company saw fit. It's just this space that it lacked and had where our people feel comfortable with the process. So we can come back to that later in the presentation. But that was just one of those, in this presentation, that's where we get a little air of concern with the faculty staff. So then.
I'll get back to you.
So then WestEd comes across with an identification of kind of what their findings are. So there's their findings, which are their results. And then there's their recommendations based on their findings and based on all of that information they gathered in. So what they, they speak to our academic instruction, they speak about learning center services, either things, services we have in place, special education programming at each grade level, speech and language services we have, occupational therapy services we have, physical therapy services we have here, counseling services we have here, and additional services. So these are the things we have in place, additional services, those are visual and mobility services that they categorize there. They also look at student achievement, achievement gap data, they look at state assessment achievement data, and they're looking at gaps with students with disabilities, between students with disabilities and students and non-disabled students as they presented. They also conduct a financial review, they compare districts. So you saw when we compared the budget, the districts that come out to be most similar to us, I think that are in our budget comparisons here, based on size, being a K-3 district and having some socioeconomic demographics and similar. I, I'm over, I'm sure, they show up. The state, when the state looks at districts, these are the districts that the DESE kind of groups us with because they have K-3 districts, so they're imposing that. But we can, may or may not see ourselves in those districts, has a possibility. And then the types of comparisons they look at. They look at the percent of our budget expended on special education, special education expenditures per student with disability, and special education teachers to student with disability ratios, so some of the comparing points you build. So the pre-re result notice on nature of the report, that's a little prompt to me, right? That's just prompt to me saying, so we, we brought a group in to look at us. We didn't bring a group in to say, you know, point out all the wonderful things that we have going on here. Point out the tremendous, they make a couple of remarks, right? In their overview, and they, they say, oh, we have great collaboration, the communication between our regular ed and special education teachers is wonderful. There's a couple of points they hit on that are very positive, but that's not the body of the report. And not that it's terribly negative either, but it's just important for me to say that, that, you know, the tone may take a different tone, but we have great people doing a lot of hard work and having great results with our students. I just wanted to remind myself of that as we go through this. So then the results, so this is what they found, these are their recommendations. So they found, when we got to the continuum of services, special education programming is provided primarily through a push-in direct-service model with some pull-out support. So that would be often defined as an inclusion model. A middle school program available for students with more significant social-emotional needs, that's our RISE program. Our learning center appears to be more focused on class assignments than direct evidence-based instruction. Current program is inconsistent in its ability to allow for intensive academic supports for system, systematic reading of math instruction in a more restricted environment. Current model of one special education teacher per grade level negatively impacts ability to provide optimal flexibility for instruction. Current IP's lacked data to ascertain that special education programming is supporting students in meeting goals. Under this system of multi-tiered system of supports, they are limited. Tier two provided in reading, K through two, math one through four, and middle school for sub-students and executive functioning. So there's also, there's a moment in time piece to this, right? So we know this year at the middle school, we've created a schedule that allows for tier-two interventions to take place. We also know that that math one through four support service is now at a third-grade classroom, right? So, so we, we're making progress, but we may, we take some steps forward and a step back. But just know it's a, it's a point in time. So, and Lori will talk about that in a few moments too. There's also people that are working on addressing some of these before they get in and into the future. Math and reading specialists use data to identify students and to monitor progress. Grade level instructions reflect the differentiation and UDL strategies, words are. Finance, special ed teacher to student with disability ratios are lowest and highest other districts. Parent professionals to student ratios identify significantly higher-than-average representation of students needing a significant level of support. And again, the comparison districts. So then when we look at the percent of budget expended on special education, 24.4%, that's FY '15, that's fourth out of that group. Special education expenditures per student with disability, FY '16, 27,156, I was third out of that group. Special ed teacher to student with disability ratio for FY '19, 14 to 1, that was fifth in that group. And special education expenditure per student with disability, FY '19, is 3294. Just info, information. Results, student results, outcomes, students with disabilities are outperforming the rest of the state on standardized assessments. Skills gaps, skills gaps exist between students with IP's and IP's. And then the professional development, professional development is teacher-driven. Teachers of parent professional seek more follow-through coaching and support and implementing new practices. And teachers have had some training in UDL and see follow-up training. So those are the results, this is what they found. And then, then they process that information and they come back to us and they say, and here are some of the recommendations we have for you and your faculty and staff to think about in moving the school. So under the continuum of services, consider special education services delivery based upon skill levels across grades. Increase COTAP model during ELA and math. Cluster students according to disabilities based upon data. I do want to preface this, so there were more recommendations, there were more recommendations in the full report and it's not as if we're trying to overlook those. But working with Lori, we just tried to group and get the theme here, like get the key pieces so that we didn't, I'm not reading every single recommendation in that. Data should be analyzed regularly to determine effectiveness of the specially-designed instruction. Better define the role of special education parent professional in the classroom. Move consult meetings to increase student-to-teacher contact time. Support all students through the use of UDL. Again, continuing, like the team of services. Provide training and coaches for co-teaching teams. Strengthen UDL practices. Provide training for special education teachers in reading instruction. Provide training on writing-effective IEP's. Hone in on accommodations which would be most useful for students. Ensure line services that terminate needs can be addressed by the special educator rather than multiple related service providers, as this could reduce fragmentation. And then when we got to the multi-tiered system of supports, identify and purchase universal screen or progress monitoring tool. We'll talk about that in a few moments. Provide time for intervention at elementary and middle school. Provide a variety of research or evidence-based practices for theater intervention. Tier one instruction, adopt an ELA curriculum to improve cohesion across grade levels. Tier two, provide teachers with a variety of intervention materials. Provide executive functioning instruction supports and provide more opportunities for students to benefit from social skills groups in the middle school. Then under tier three, which is special education, provide intensive reading instruction to students who are significantly behind grade level with integrity. Provide additional intensive math intervention. With regard to finances, reorganize and train parent professionals, provide small, targeted group instructional supports. At annual IP meetings, review the continuity for one-to-one supports. Use special education teachers more effectively. Student results and outcomes, implement tier intervention to meet the needs of all students, including high-need students, English learners, and students with disabilities. And use universal screening, progress monitoring data, statewide assessment data. And other data sources in order to focus support for them and also.
It's not the same. So make sure, make sure when it's posted, it's good.
So then, so I apologize for reading a lot to you, right? One thing is it's small, everyone might not be able to see it, but I am reporting their information and I don't feel comfortable paraphrasing too much. For next steps though, what we need to do, what we need to do now. Work with student support services director, faculty and staff to identify areas of initial work and long-term goals. Collaboratively develop a plan to address agreed-upon recommendations and set those goals. And keep faculty, staff, school committee, community updated on work and progress towards the identified goals. So I don't know if you have questions for me at this point in time, or if you'd like to hear from Lori as we kind of segue into that combination.
I think that'd be fine. Let's hear the response.
Do you want to segue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi Lori, how are you?
Oh, hi.
Do you want a plug?
Yeah. There we go. Okay.
Yeah.
I am going to pick up where Jim left off. So when the report came in, Jim met with myself and Dennis Matt and said, you know, what in WestEd report resonates with our experience? And I had already been here for a bit, so I did a little bit of work in June and then I came on full-time in July. We got this report at the end of August. So part of me was like, validated. Okay, good, I'm not the only person that is seeing some of these things. I had also like done data collection on IEP's. I had also had conversations with different people and so some of the stuff was validating. Some of the stuff was, I don't know how true this is based on what I've seen, but let me spend the next, you know, when the kids get back and step back and I'll unpack this a little bit more. So let's see, kind of feel like some of this is like a black and white photo that might not all be at the right angles and we needed to fill in some of the color. So as Jim said, WestEd review, this is, this was their areas that they looked at, you know, services, the professional development, multi-tiered support, finance, student results and outcomes. While I looked at all of that, I took a slightly different approach to how I went about it when I got here. So I needed to say, okay, where should we put our energy upfront? What's the most important things? How do we prioritize what needs to get done? I need to figure out like who's teaching? And what are they teaching? How are they teaching? And then how are we communicating what they're teaching? Because I was already seeing a little bit of discrepancy between the WestEd report and what I was already being exposed to at that point in time. So who's teaching? Well, this is what I have garnered. And I have done observations of almost every single person that reports to me at this point. And they've been documented in teach point and shared with my staff. And I've been in a bunch of general ed classes, I've read to kids, I've sat back at work, you've done a bunch of different things. And I also, like I said, took about 30 IEP's and collected data and looked for trends on that in my first year. So this is what I, this is what I discovered. We have incredibly talented, talented staff, right? We don't have a lot of turnover here and there's a reason, because it's a wonderful place to work. And every day that I would come home, my husband would be like, so how's the job? And I'm like, I love it, because of the people. I'm working with an amazing group of talented people and I feel like there's such a sense of community and collaboration between everyone. And WestEd saw that as well. There's a lot of good conversations that take place where people are learning from one another, which is great. We see that people emerge as leaders willing to train mentors. We see parent professionals that are giving support from their, the teachers that they work with, both general ed and special ed. I can tell you from times and other settings, that's not always the case, but it was really nice to see. And there's a really positive rapport between special ed and general ed. And I can also tell you, from being in a lot of schools, because I've done advocacy work, I've done observations and things like that, that is a wonderful thing to see and it's not, does not happen in a lot of places. In a lot of places, there's a big split. You do not see that here. Beautiful collaborative approach to meeting the needs of students. But what are the areas for discussion? Well, there is the role of the SLPs. There's three SLPs.
SLP.
Uh, speech and language pathologists, thank you, sorry. So we have them and they are doing a lot. So we have them and they are doing lots and lots of individual services and one-to-one pullouts. But they're not really spending enough time in pre-k and I think that we need to think about that because of the types of needs that students at that age have. And they're, they're kind of maxed out, so we need to look at that. They're supported by their peers, you have school psychologists that are doing some of the social groups. To, you know, because they're also qualified and trained to do that, but typically some of that falls under SLPs. So that's something that I have to continually look at and address with the team. Co-teaching model, we've got two classrooms that have or trying piloting this co-teaching model. There is much more to co-teaching than this idea of having a special educator and a general educator in a classroom and trying to teach everything together. We need to unpack how general ed and special ed can co-teach a subject. So it doesn't make it so limiting in their ability then to also work with the students who have special ed. On the flip side, in middle school, I believe there is a lot of middle school staff that are now in the classrooms with the teachers. This makes sense, this is the natural progression that should take place, right? You should start off with students getting a lot of one-to-one support when they're young and they don't have the skills and teaching that skills. Then it moves to small group, then it moves to being part of the class with support. That's how it should happen. Now, that's your average, there are also your outliers and your students that have different levels of needs, so that also has to be kept in mind. I come from the kind of philosophy that integration is this word that we use. However, we should all just, it should just be a classroom with children with a variety of needs and different people with different strengths work together to make sure we're meeting all the needs of all the students. Sometimes that means pulling them out one-to-one, sometimes it means pulling a small group of kids, sometimes it means working cohesively together. How paraprofessionals are supported and utilized needs to be unpacked a little bit more. There's huge differences, some of them are there for behavior reasons, some of them are there for educational reasons, some of them are there because of the high need of the student, medically fragile student, whatever. There, we now have markers that we've talked about of when somebody would actually have a paraprofessional assigned to them individually and there should be very few of those. It should be more classroom oriented and this is kind of in line with what West Ed was talking about. Professional development, professional development, West Ed is right. I kind of found that out by accident when I was like, I think you should go to this training or like, let's talk about that training. Or somebody's like, can I go to this training? I'm like, oh no. And they were like, what? What do you mean no? It has been very teacher driven. I think that yes, the teachers should take a huge responsibility for their own professional training, but I think it has to be balanced with us looking at bigger picture and making sure that we lift up the strengths and the interests of our staff, but making sure that we're covering a wide variety, a wide landscape so that we're training in everything from UDL and executive functioning to social skill development, emotional skill development, just a wide, you know, literacy, math. Just to make sure that we've got it all covered. So that, another area that we need to look at. So how and what are we teaching? I really believe that there's a ton that we're doing right. I think we have a really strong foundation to the house and I think that's important to recognize. Especially when you read this like thick report that has, you know, some very, very accurate and great wonderful information. I've read this report three times now, so, and then some that's just a little off. Or you know what, we're already doing a lot of that, but we haven't been doing it long enough for you to see it clearly enough to be able to recognize it. So our kids are making effective progress. We know from West Ed report that our students with disabilities are performing better than a lot of other students with disabilities in the state. That's something to celebrate. We know that we're looking at, I'm looking at IEPs that were written last spring and, or last fall and then I'm seeing children now and I'm getting, we do have universal testers right now, we do have universal screeners. I know that was what mentioned in West Ed, we do have them and kids are looking better, we're seeing progress. So that is exciting. We're also starting to unpack a little bit about what it means if a student doesn't do well and how we can look at that from another angle. And so we're coming together collaboratively as a group of special educators and really trying to unpack, okay, what I call error analysis. It's not about the score. Don't tell me about the score, tell me why the score looks like that. Where did the errors take place? How did it happen? Did they skip a word? Did they skip a line? Did they not know how to fill? If you check, one teacher said they were really concerned about their child's math, right? And so we talked about it and then we said, oh, look, they, all the ones they got wrong, where you said they didn't know how to do subtraction. If you actually add those, it's your correct answer. So the error analysis then showed us, this is not that they don't know subtraction, this is that they're rushing or they're not shifting between subtraction and addition when they're lined up. So those are the types of things that were, you know, what you had. Also, students are engaged. I know that in the report, there was a little bit of some student, some student engagement in some classes where there maybe was a couple of kids with their heads down, that is called normal, middle school too sometimes. Okay, hoodies and heads down. So I think when they do their summary, they do mention that they were pretty impressed with the level of student engagement. And I have been super impressed when I come to a class, both from all the way like way down in kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, the level of student engagement is impressive and speaks to the staff and how they're teaching. Matt's new middle school schedule, while I know it was kind of tumultuous to get up and running, is excellent. And there are students that are, not even realize that they're working on executive functioning skills with how to organize themselves, with how to look at things from a variety of perspectives, to recognize that they might be having a big reaction to something, to, you know, understand that this doesn't have to look so overwhelming, let's chunk it down. To how to have a take notes, it's impressive what I've seen so far happen. There's wraparound support, meaning that when there is a one special educator that had a student that really needed more intense phonics instruction, that special educator said, you know what? This is, this is not, I'm not going to be able to do the math really well. So a special educator from a different grade is now doing the reading instruction for that student and the person is continuing to do math and she's doing math instruction and she's doing phonics from a different grade, working it out. There was a lot this year that was kind of put together at the last minute with special educators in different grades helping out in other grades where we have an influx. We'll talk about that in a minute. It shows the level of support for one another, but it has inherently had some issues too. We also are talking about markers for curriculum choices, right? So what I mean by that is we have everyday math in the elementary school. Elementary, everyday math is a cyclical program. It kind of goes around and around, right? Spirals, we call it a spiral math program. We now recognize that there's certain students that must have linear math, they must have number worlds. We're going to have to take them out of their class and give them a number worlds curriculum to support the everyday math because it's not working. And, oh, there's my typo, it's not increased us, it's increased use of technology. We are looking into more software for that anything can be read to a student. So a PDF, anything like that, to read and write software, so they can plug in, if they're a non-reader, they can still access gradeable content. They can still, anything that the teacher hands out, they can still have read to them and also they can dictate into it. It's a pretty solid program. But really, a lot of this is about getting some of our younger elementary students to independently utilize that accommodation that they may need so they can access more of their curriculum. Okay, so there weren't a lot of parents that were asked, that were, that wound up, I think, contributing to this West Ed report. And I also think sometimes you get parents that are upset, you don't always get the parents, sorry. But we always need to think about how we can, how are we communicating, how can we increase communication? So I would say almost everything that the West Ed report said about the IEPs is a hundred percent accurate and I saw it and I, you know, analyzed them as well. However, what they didn't mention is these IEPs were well-written and they weren't, it wasn't a lack of understanding of the child. It was a lack of understanding of how to write an IEP. But prior to even having that report, we had scheduled an IEP training, the first half day in September, we had it. So all of the special educators and specialists, anybody who writes an IEP, had that training. But in most trainings, they're not effective if you don't have follow-up. So I'm narrating every IEP and working with people individually, including taking like what they've written, putting it into a Google Doc, hitting an overstrike mode so they can see all changes that are being suggested, they can decide what they're going to accept or they might write me back and go, oh, let me explain why it's like this. We're, it's going to take us all year because it's one IEP at a time, but they will get, they will get better. And what I mean by better is I mean that they'll be more consistent from one grade level to the next so they won't change based on how some special educator might have been trained prior to coming to Carlisle. They will follow all the legal guidelines so that they're all legally intact IEPs. But I think that they'll do a better job of communicating to the families exactly where their child is, how their child's performing in their general ed class, as well as where they're falling behind, what their strengths are, how we're going to use those strengths to help them with their weaknesses. And it's going to be consistent across the board. So it's, I'm making it sound easier than it is, it's going to take a little bit of work because there's a constant like conversations, but that's how to have the impact be positive, is to continue to engage in these conversations. And the staff have been open and happy and grateful, they just said, oh, thank you so much, I remember how this like, oh, I didn't know that. And we've just kind of gone about it like positively, like let's work together to just streamline these. Progress notes will come out quarterly, those will be data based. I would say we've got about seventy-five percent of our staff writing very well-written, well, I actually, I really want to, everybody actually writes quite well, that's impressive. But they're not all data driven, so we're going to make sure that this year we have data driven progress report. So parents really have an idea of how kids are coming along. And it's not like, oh, they're meeting this goal now sixty percent of the time. They're meeting this goal sixty percent of the time and this is what it looks like. So that's the direction we're moving in there. We're asking special educators to do more anecdotal emails out to parents. So you don't want to just get that email when there's a problem, that you also get the email when things are going well. I think that there are some general educators that do such a good job of sending out like, you know, communication that sometimes the special educator is like, oh, well, she's already communicating it. But it's important for parents to know that their case manager is on top and meeting with their kid and knows what's going on and whatnot. So we're going to do more of that and we've already had more informal meetings. We had an IEP meeting and despite trying to keep the IEP meeting as positive as possible, it was one where the parents had some leftover residual feelings from their previous year IEP and they came to us and with a, you know, kind of the guard up, right? So we went through the IEP, we did what we needed to do technically speaking, but there was still a feeling of unease. The general ed teacher and the special ed teacher just met with them again. Had them come in one morning, a smaller group, less intimidating with having a full team around, talked them through it. We had signed that IEP like three days later. So these informal meetings are happening not just there. School psychologist and myself and a kindergarten teacher met with the family. Whenever we see there's a need, we're like, just come on in, let's sit down, let's spend, you know, thirty to sixty minutes kind of making sure that you understand and you feel comfortable with what's happening. So, and we've all been also trying to make some phone calls because sometimes email is just not the best way of communication. And I think we're getting a sense of who our families are and we're hearing people, again, this collaborativeness, people are saying to each other, ooh, we should call that family, that's a feeling we should call. So it's, it's. So goals. I thought about a little Carol DeWitt growth mindset quote in there because I do think that it's really important when we're working in education to recognize that when change needs to be made, it doesn't have to be something that's threatening or, or like make us feel uncomfortable about what we're doing. It's just to say, hey, here's another chance for us to grow, we're teaching children, we're learning, this is opportunities for us to learn as well. And so with that in mind, these are the district goals that I'm sure at some other point we'll go over in more depth or you have already, but I just put that in there because I wanted you to know that I'm well aware of district goals and special education must also follow those goals. And so I've worked closely with Matt and Dennis in looking at the goals for this coming year and making sure that special ed is part of that. And so when we, when we get to presenting that, you'll see that there is input, you know, input from data as well on those. But we want the IEPs to be, you know, comprehensive, driven by data, consistent and equitable. And that's, that's a big one, again, it gets back to those markers. If, you know, these are the reasons why you would qualify for summer services, it's the same for everybody. One parent had said, oh, I thought it was like winning the lottery, you know, it's actually based on data, so. And that we have to look at staff placements that support strengths and others. So what I said before was that we have staff that were like, okay, I'm willing to help, I'm willing to help, I'm willing to help. And so we have, you know, special educators from the eighth grade helping out, teaching reading in the second grade and seventh grade and first grade and. It's working, but it's not the best it can be. We have a variety of strengths within our staff and we should lift those up. We have staff members that are super interested and incredibly good at teaching explicit phonics instruction. They should do that across grade levels. We have staff members that are really good at teaching math, they should, they should do that across grade levels. We should meet and come together and think about what makes the most sense for our staff. Who has what certifications, where their expertise is and work this through. West Ed is right, one teacher per grade level doesn't make sense. And we currently have the third grade, which will be the fourth grade, which is why Jim had talked about in the budget presentation, while that group already is four, that is a very heavy grade. So those numbers, seventeen per class, when you break them into four classes, feels like a lot more than seventeen because it's a very heavy group of kids with high needs, you know. And you have to remember when we're looking at some of the data, you can have ten kids on an IEP on one person's caseload and five kids on another person's caseload, but the one with five has way more service hours because those kids have much heavier needs than maybe the other ten that might just have, you know, just need speech and language or be closer to grade level and not have, be such an impactful situation or not having to do a diagnosis. We are going to work on the summer program, five weeks, we'll do three days a week, three days a week, but five weeks this summer. That's to help not make sure that our kids don't regress over the summertime and also just kind of build a sense of community that we're here for you for five weeks during the summertime as well. And we are going to invest in individuals so they can succeed as part of a larger group. And that is both investing in our staff and our students. Because the whole point is that everybody feels that they're part of a successful team. So whether they're a student in a classroom that wants to feel like they're part of that class and accessing what the rest of their friends are accessing, or it's a special educator that wants to feel like I'm part of Carlisle Public Schools, I'm not just part of third grade. For that, is that, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Because I did see you three times, I think I know it now.
So there's a lot here, we're not going to cover it all tonight, but I want to say from the start, you know, I get it that education is hard. And I personally believe that the Carlisle School as a unit does a tremendous job at its mission. But I also feel. But I also feel that we are so focused on those last remarks you made, making people feel included and making people feel welcome, especially children. And I know that that's important. But I, I personally feel, and this report validates that feeling that I have, that we are overly concerned about that piece and not enough focus on fundamental teaching for the kids for whom it does not come naturally. And I have two of those kids, so I speak from experience. And I'm a little, I have to say, I'm disappointed in the administration at this point, because I believe the report as written is pretty comprehensive. And there's kind of, you know, I don't know you very well, Lori, but I know Jim pretty well. And there's a smooth sort of, yeah, it's okay, and here's the thing. It's kind of a smooth, let's feel good about this. And I believe, and I am in my own professional life, under, you know, audits by organizations who I don't always agree with, but they all come in and they poke at things, whether it's financial or operational. And they come out with long lists of conclusions, and you gotta look at those and you gotta focus on those. And I get the sense here, well, here's the report. I can't really show it all to you. And I get some of the personal stuff. Let's separate that. But, you know, there's a lot of meat in the actual report, separate from the focus groups. Oh, well, the conclusions might not be quite right, you know, we're gonna adjust that. And I think, you know, that's not, to me, like what I call the Carlisle way. I mean, there is data that an independent organization got through a process. And I happen to be a data-driven guy. And I have to say that, you know, overall, we spend a lot of money. We spend a lot of resources. And yet the achievement gaps, what they call the achievement gaps. And the achievement gaps, one thing that's been said several times is, well, our kids at SED do better than the state. Well, of course, they do better than the state. But our kids in regular ed do far better than the state. Whereas our kids in special ed do marginally better than the state. And the money we spend on special education, and it's what, it's appropriate to spend. I'm certainly an advocate of spending. But we spend, if you do the math, at $30,000 per student who is not on an IEP but not out of district. That's the math. So there's money being spent. If it's enough or not enough, you know, there's a lot of things in here about more resources. And maybe we have to confront that. But I personally believe, and I don't wanna spend time going into the details, but I think that there should be a reset here. And there should be an embracing of the data that's being provided. And say, let me finish. And say, you know, an independent organization, through their methodology, looked at this. And here's, you know, four or five pages of recommendations. And it ought to be point by point. And you can say, okay, I don't agree on this, and this is the data that supports that. But the tone, and I don't wanna be mean-spirited about it. I love the school. But I think we're doing ourselves as a board and our community of parents and students and teachers a disservice if we don't, you know, square up to it in a more open way than I am perceiving.
So let me, let me address that, right? So I apologize if you've come away from this thinking we're trying to smooth everything over, right? So the report has given us some information. We've shared the report out with you. We wanna share the report out with everyone. There's one piece, the focus groups.
I get it.
Redacted, right? But other than that, we're just kind of presenting the findings. There's no, we have, I feel, so if I've presented this in any way, shape, or form, yes, we have great people, and I'd like to reiterate that. We've identified areas that we need to work, right? We just shared it with the faculty, but this is gonna be a collaborative thing as we identify the goals, which I'm not questioning what WestEd put out there, right? But this is gonna be a collaborative thing, how we address this and how we move that ball forward, right? And it, so we're gonna do this together. I, this, I get the sense you feel like someone's trying to smooth this over.
I do have that feeling. I have to say.
I would disagree. I would think, well, we're trying to, I speak openly, obviously. I think we're trying to manage a situation, yeah, there are things that we, I'm gonna say as a leadership team, have identified, yes, the WestEd report supports us, that are, that are very contradictory to feelings that our faculty and staff have. Now, if we're gonna hopefully move this in the direction that we feel is appropriate, we need to do that in a collaborative way, and we need to do that together.
I don't disagree, Jim.
So we could, but we need to just, well, this is the first, this is, this is our first presentation of the information.
And I'm, I'm here to, in the part I can play, which is not, I don't, you know, we're a board. We don't run the school. But a little bit of a reset from my vantage point to not say what I'm hearing, which is, everything's okay. We're outperforming the state. There's some things we gotta address. Yes, that's all true, but the report is much more pointed. It's much more pointed in its conclusion that effectively the resources are not being used as well as they could be. And I don't wanna go into details on a non-yet-public report. But I, I wanna make my point very clearly in a public meeting, that I think, I think there should be a more, I think, first of all, the report in whatever version should be out there before we go too much further. Because you're saying, well, this and that, but everybody has to rely on your, your own reaction of the, of the information.
And again, like, I apologize if you feel like we didn't take this seriously.
I didn't know. I never said it didn't take it seriously.
So let's talk about this idea of reset.
Yes.
You did hit reset. You have a new director of student support services. And you can ask the staff, there's been a lot of change. And I typically know, as, you know, I've been a leader for a long time. And I know that you come in and you're supposed to like watch and get to know people. And, you know, but I've said to these guys, you know, they can tell you, I apologize. I would like to spend more time sitting back and understanding the bigger picture of this, but we have some issues we have to deal with right now. So let's look at your schedule and let's make sure that some of these kids get more pullouts. So let's look at, like, you're gonna do this BATS, all the general educators are gonna do the BATS, but you're also gonna do a DIBELS, and you're also gonna do this and that. Oh, they're gonna do this math assessment. I also want you to do that math assessment. They've got, general ed has their stuff. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we're doing enough to really hone in on what's going on with each one of our kids. And what's the, not so much what the disability name is, because it looks different for every kid, but how they are learning and where they're not learning. And I have pushed them on their IP's. They've had to get them to me early. They've had to rewrite things. I've pushed them on their reports. I have pushed them in, I showed up in their consults. Somebody said to me recently, why are you here? And I said, because I was invited, because somebody else in the room said, can you come and help us unpack this? Unpack this kid. I've met with kids myself, so that I can then meet with special educators to say, you know what? The methodology that we're using for this kid, not working. We gotta, we gotta start over, you know? So you have hit the reset button. You have somebody that functions a little differently than the people that you've had in the past. But change does not happen without first recognizing what you do well and building upon that. And there is a lot that we do well.
I, I recognize that, and I don't wanna come across, I probably do come across, but I, I'm very appreciative of the teachers here, and I've had many years with the teachers. I'm kind of not, I don't actually mean this in any way directed at the teachers' efforts. I think the teachers do not stand each other. And what the study indicates is, and you pointed it out this moment, there's a certain lack of direction in certain areas that they're meant, they, you know, we love our self-directed workforce, and it's very important to us. But there has to be guidance. And again, you weren't here. It's, this is not, in no way a reflection on you, because you weren't here for the baseline. So don't, please don't be defensive about it.
No, I'm not. I'm just trying to say like, we know that we have to build more skills. We get that. I knew that from talking to Matt and Dennett before this report even got here. Jim, they knew this stuff. Like I said, a lot of this was validating to what we already knew needed to be worked on.
Fair enough, but all I'm saying is I, you just brought in a lot more things that you're actually doing than in your presentation. The, again, my impression, just reading the report for the first time, hearing, we didn't get that in advance, you know, same thing. But your style and your presentation of this versus what I read don't square. Your analysis of what he said is okay, and I agree with most of it, but it wasn't that deep. Yet you just gave me a whole bunch of things that you actually are doing. So I think, I'm just, you know, I'm making my point. And what I would like to see as we go through this journey over the year is much more close cooperation and much more discreet, you know, here's the things, here's kind of some big things that were identified. And, and again, from the sample of N equals two, which is my two kids, that's all I got. This is right, because they didn't do so. So let's understand that there's a bunch of people, and you're gonna fix it, and it's great. But there's a bunch of people that maybe aren't fixed right now.
But, but I guess I would say the process will be, from here, we will identify what those goals are. And I think the goals will align with the significant pieces in the WestEd report that we recognize as significant prior to the WestEd report. As Laura said, they kind of validate us. There are pieces, and there's probably, you know, four or five of them, right? There's a lot in there, but really, there's four or five key pieces.
I don't wanna debate them, I'll see.
No, but I think we should tell you, these are the goals that we're gonna work on. And then you hold our feet to the floor and say, where, where are we as far as progressing on these?
Before you even say the goals, you really should say, look, this is really what the report came out with. And here's the goals that we'll address that. And that impression was not at all clear at the time. So, you know, look, we have months. We have years. I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight. But when I say reset, I mean minds, you know, you quoted Carol DeWitt, you know, opportunities, challenges are opportunities for growth. So let's just, you know, get together on this and say, we don't actually do SED that well here. Now, maybe it's changed here. I don't think we do SED that well.
See, that's, this is where we go from like, we have recommendations. They're gonna help us with broad sweeping strokes. And they're like, I'm not sure if that's exactly what is in the, I could, let's say, I can name four or five components if we can do better.
We could, we could do better.
Yeah, there we go.
There is room for growth, but there, I sat in a lot of meetings already this year. I have at least three weeks, sometimes six. And, you know, I have parents and staff talking about the amount of progress that students have made from the time they met last fall to this fall, and it's impressive. So I'm sorry if your two data points don't jive with that, but it's not indicative of what's happening across the board.
Okay.
Can I call phone check?
Yes, Evan.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm calling you. Some of the classes are over the phone to the students. I hope you can hear me. I still have very appreciation for Jersey and the school that's doing for special education for the students, for the, for the large student body here. As, you know, as there's definitely a big focus of including the, making sure that the kids are, um, they feel good about coming to the school regardless of disabilities. Um, the, the thing that I'd like to hear is, I know that the WestEd reported, you know, they were not, they were not able to get too much of the sampling of, um, they were not able to speak to too many families. Are we, are we going, as, as, this is such a great opportunity for research, for starting from, you know, fairly young, um, what we have and we're making, um, it's not that great. Can, can we include, is there a way to recruit more of the talent, voice that currently has the kids in special education just so it helps to deploy the, you know, the services to the area of greatest need? And, you know, be strategic in how we are, you know, um, using our, our resources, teachers and, and to support our students also. So, um, that part I did share, you know, trust of, um, teacher education and, um, their development, um, having an opportunity to really, specifically now that we have this report, look at global need and what, you know, what we should be focusing on. And then really having the director and the administration, you know, buy that, um, that idea of, okay, what are we going to have, what skills do we need to go, what needs do we have, what skills can we bring in, what, what can help our students the best? And which teachers would be doing that, you know? So to, to those students, if you would speak, please.
Sure. So the CPAC is gonna be putting out a survey, a parent survey. It is primarily, it was primarily designed to look at like what would be beneficial for parents to have them be more involved in CPAC, as well as asking questions about the summer program and getting ready to design a five-week program. But we certainly could add more questions to that to get more information. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, yeah, I like that idea too. And I'd love to do it through the CPAC, because you've got a group of people that are working hard. I'd like to validate that and let them have. We also joined the Federation, so that'll allow for the parents' rights training to be done by somebody from the Federation and provide other opportunities for families to come together. Because I think it's really beneficial for families to feel that they're being educated, not just by us, but also by other people that come in on what their rights are, as well as being able to, be able to work together and understand that, you know, it can be tough. It is very, very challenging to have a student on an IP. And it's a hard emotional ride. And if you can find other people that you can relate to, that's great. So I think that's a great idea, and I can talk to CPAC about it.
Okay, thank you.
Give her a second. Give her a second.
Yeah.
The professional development one?
What was your, Evan, what was your second point?
Yes, it's a professional development, like, yeah, how can we personalize our looking at, um, at the report and, you know, deploying the teachers in the right places. You know, the special education students can actually get the, get the, I think, that in the classroom. What is, um, how the resources will be, um, what's, what's the next step then, besides releasing the, um, what are, are the teachers going to get together with administration and they all try to work with, together with the special education, of figuring out, you know, how we can address this, this issue, the, how, how this, you know, what, what are the needs, um, for the traditional education of the teachers? Is this, what's this come off of that, of that list?
So yes, the teachers are going to be part of kind of unpacking the recommendations. Some of the recommendations are already in place. So they talk about UDL training. That's already been scheduled. Dennett's doing a lot on that front. There's power professionals. There's, we had a training of power professionals on promoting higher-order thinking that was done right before school started. And now power professionals on next Tuesday are having a part two to what they had last year. They had somebody from ECHO that they really liked last year, talking about the role of supporting students' learning in the classroom, so that's happening. So there's certain pieces of it that are happening, and there's certainly more things that will. But my plan is to work with the special educators and continually work with administration to look at, it, it's something you do constantly, right? And all the visioning. And so that will also allow us, we have lots of people come to Jim's visioning meetings. And, you know, as we start to get into that, a little bit deeper into the visioning, where you look at like, okay, the part of visioning is, okay, you know, where do we see ourselves? Where do we dream ourselves to be? What's it gonna take to get there? You know, and so these things will naturally be, kind of come together as well.
Um, well, I, I just wanted to say that envisioning, I think, is, uh, my first goal was that it was more for, uh, the visioning of the local school, not necessarily of the special education.
Yes.
It's the topic of, of, of the visioning of the school, of focusing on the special education and what we're going to address it.
Hi, Evan. This is Shannon. It's wide open right now, but of course, the special education needs are a subset of the whole school, so they would be included. I think that's kind of an assumption that I have, and I think it's pretty widely shared.
Okay.
Heads are nodding.
I have a question about Concord. Since Concord's one year ahead of us in this, right? They did the, yep.
Yep.
And I don't like to, I, you know, it's all a bit swag, but Concord Taylor, but, um, in terms of aligning kind of the students as they go through, you know, their, their experiences and then they, they come together in the high school. Is there any look at, at kind of having over, you know, consistency, I guess? And it, how do And it, how does the West Ed, uh, report hours compare with the, like, are there any commonalities? And is there anything that we can glean from whatever they may have implemented already? To see if, if there are solutions or whatnot that.
Yeah, I haven't read their, their report.
I haven't, I mean, Jim and I met with Lori and Ruthie, who's their new director of student services. So, we've kind of, it was more of a meet and greet and kind of overarching conversation about, you know, how we're adapting to different, um, profiles that each district has and whatnot. Um, but that's certainly something that makes sense to do.
I agree.
Okay, so, um, what would we like to see from here? It seems like you might even need some more, you think we should look at some more specifics? Maybe each month, or?
You know, we've put a lot of emotional things on the table here. I, I, um, I believe, because one of our goals is special education.
Yep.
We have the report, we have Lori on ground, um, you know, that that should be a core piece of the process. And maybe we all should think about it for a month and come back with some ideas about how, whether that's a subcommittee that works, you know? Maybe it's, I don't know the answer, I haven't got to step two, but. It's very important, obviously, to myself personally, and I think to Evan, but as a committee, we've come together on that as one objective, and we have a lot of information in the new director. So, this is the year, I think, for us to say, let's take the opportunity. And again, I want to apologize, I don't in any way mean to reflect that the teachers aren't great teachers. In fact, my son, his special educators here, especially the last year, someone that Susan knows very well, outstanding in their commitment to the kids. But, there are a lot of process pieces here about changing the way we look at education. And, you know, from a, again, from a board level, it's not about whether we have three pairs or four pairs, or did they go for this training or that training? They need all that, and we trust you to do that. It's conceptually, how are we approaching this issue? And again, being a data-driven guy, if you have a certain set of results with a certain set of output, you don't just double down on the output if you don't like the results. You take it, you take a step back and say, wait a minute, what is this telling me about the process? And how can I maybe look at that, you know, benchmarking to the schools you know well? Because you ran one, right? Benchmarking to where they treat only those kind of kids, and what are they extracting? And, you know, private education, or public or different, but there's things to learn. So, I, you know, it's kind of like the visioning, right? It's, it's, let's, the visioning got very emotional last year because it got co-mingled with, you know, taking teachers out, restructuring. But when we settled down after we got through all that, we came out with a positive output. And the positive output was, let's really imagine what the school can be. Let's break our boundaries of what we're thinking. And we haven't started that yet, but I have confidence in Shannon and, you know, the people so far that have volunteered, I think that's gonna come out with a better school system. And I see it same here, you know, you're coming in new, and, you know, we got the data, and we got this and that. I'd like to see a few more eggs broken, I guess, you know, before we just do more of what we're doing. And that's sort of my frustration is, let's not just do more of what we're doing, let's do different what we're doing. If we can help in the, maybe even if you don't think we can help, if we, if we can be part of that journey, you know, that's a good thing for me, for me personally, and I think for us as a committee and the community, put it in a better spot.
Do we, do we track?
I want to add, yeah, with the change of the metal. Well, I think we have a very unique opportunity, because, uh, you know, I think that Congress and the community has been very progressive, it's very creative, we. All committee is very open to trying things and, um, some of those risks. Or, you know, that we're. For, um, for work, and give it a lot more flexibility to students and families, you know, um, for choice, for some choices of their, 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 their. Uh, we have a unique opportunity to, you know, to expand into special education, you know, have more flexibility to providing services, you know, a little easier, um, and, and a little more effective. Um, so, I think, I don't wanna say too much, because we're waiting for the release of the, uh, uh. What that, uh, report, but. It's just really a unique, uh, uh, opportunity, and I am really calling out also to the community, and, and, you know, this is the time that we should be working together to, um, help create, you know, be part of this journey, help create this, uh, uh, this, 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 this kind of program. Uh, because we're already there, because of most of the community, but if we can, um, if, um, we're successful, if you feel successful, uh, from, it will be a win for a great teacher, this is an efficient one, it also will be a big win for, for our kids.
Right, yeah. I have a question about students who leave the school, not who are out of district place, but kids who feel that they weren't supported here, or the families didn't feel like they, that there was some need that wasn't adequately met. And I know, I mean, I know anecdotally several of these, and, um, I'm wondering, does the school look at, at, you know, like, at who leaves and why, and are there themes, like, oh, after a certain grade, there's a little bit of an exodus, um?
So, that's, yeah, we have, we do, as students leave, we have a, a survey we have to fill out and respond to that. So, we do see trends of kids leaving, going to private schools. And, and oftentimes, it isn't, I won't, I won't quote the data, I'll, I'll go check with Amy, she's got the report, and I'll come back at the next meeting and report that.
Okay.
Because I don't want to feel like, I'm putting a shadow to sleep, you know? I'll just get the data and bring the data back.
I mean, because anecdotally, it seems that there are, I know some that are, that it is because this is. Oh, I think it's not, uh, that they're stuck in this neither him nor their spot.
You know, another thing I want to say, that David mentioned that, uh, subcommittee, which I think is a great idea. You know, we are a small district, and, um, as I was trying to like, think about, like, what stories I could tell, and, you know, we're a small district, there's certain things, certain stories, if I start to tell them, everybody's gonna know who I'm talking about. So, it's much better to have a smaller committee that, that can then report back saying, I feel comfortable, um, as opposed to being put in a place where I've got a, I mean, even when I was trying to tell stories about teachers, I was like, try not to say names, and this and that, because I want to respect, I mean, especially Ed, we have to respect the privacy of our kiddos, and it's, it's hard to do that naturally with such a small environment, so.
Well, we don't have to be anecdotal to drive, you know, the changes that you talked about, like IPs, which I think are right changes, you know?
Yeah, those are easy to talk about, but.
So, would we all be of the same mind that looking at, publish the report, right? Let's get the report, teachers would like to read the report? But should we extract those seventeen pages?
Yeah, if it makes you uncomfortable, I think, yeah, you know, I think.
I think I would feel more, I would feel more comfortable with the faculty and staff, but that's what we did.
Yeah, I mean, right, nobody wants anybody to be uncomfortable. I, I think, I think the conclusions reached are metadata conclusions, right? They don't, they don't, they don't reflect back on the specific, you know, things. And I would say, I'd rather get the meat of the report out personally.
Absolutely.
And that we're dealing with the same set of facts, everybody can read them for themselves. But, then, you know, once it's out there, and there are those four pages, or I didn't count the pages, but there's several pages of conclusions, and they're fairly specific. You gotta now, you know, it's like any audit, the auditor came in, the auditor found some things, you may not agree, but you gotta respond to the audit.
I'm not even sure we disagreed with it, I, I, I.
Well, the impressive day of the report was, like, you know, we don't agree with some things, but.
Well, I think, so it wasn't so much we didn't agree, some observations, yeah, maybe we didn't agree, but the main points, well, tho- those are peripheral observations, the main points that came out in their recommendations, I think we, as administrative team, may understand those. I'm not sure, as you read the focus group responses, I'm not sure everybody in the faculty and staff would embrace everything so openly.
The focus group is just some data.
No, no, I'm just, I'm saying that represents a thing, is that like, within the building, within the district, we'll have varying, varying perspectives, but we, like, those points are, no one's trying to say like, no, that's not valid, right?
No, you can say, we're already doing it, or, you know, I mean, as you pointed out, some things have already changed, so fine. It's all about improvement anyway, you know, there's no point in being defensive about it in any way. I think the focus groups were a piece of data, you can extract a raw piece of that, and the overall theme is the same, and they did all the other stuff in the methodology, I thought they were pretty thorough. I agree with Sarah that, you know, probably ought to take a look at what Concord, what their report said and what they did, because they are, and, and they've been, you know, in my opinion, with no data really, because I'm not involved as deeply, um, they've done a good job of addressing this, so.
I'll put a note, so what I'll do, I'll, I'll take that, I'll put a note in for the seventeen pages, we gotta redact, and then we'll make it available on the website, put something up there.
So, you sent a draft and a final, is, is the final about that reaction in it already?
No, no, that was a, so, it was an initial draft they sent out, and if you compare the two, like, even MCAS data, there's all types of things that would need to be re-written.
Okay.
So, then there was the final draft.
Okay, so the final draft just corrects some factors.
The final draft did some things there.
Hypo's.
I, I mean, one was a media, one was a word. Yeah, I communicated with Silver, like, so if we want, and I told her not to do anything, if we want to go back and have her manipulate those things, or we just redact them and send it that way. Well, this way, everybody will have, everybody should have the same session.
We'll all be working in the same place.
I agree.
We gotta move on, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
She's hoping.
I do have an eating IP meeting.
Um, is the, when is the program, coordinate program, program due?
That's, um, twenty twenty-one, so I actually go in this month for an outline. You're not calling that program, program, coordinate review in order, unit tier, something, sorry, I don't remember. But it'll be next year this time.
Next year, that's what.
Yeah, some, there'll be some people, or they'll have it initially in the spring.
Yep.
Um, but they're, they will run out next year, whether they can choose us for fall or spring, I will be able to let them.
Okay.
Yeah, I wish you were here.
Okay, so, um, the discard list? Would you like to do the, don't you do the discard list?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott Hefner, our IT director, submitted this list. Uh, if you review it, you see that it's very aged, predominantly very aged iPads, um, that either the hardware will no longer support upgrades, or they've broken and the cost from here exceeds the product itself.
Yeah, you're in speaker.
So, we are asking to approve this discard list. It would then go to the town hall to see if they want any pieces of this equipment. Often, I think, comes on aging, may take advantage of old iPads, just to give people an opportunity. Um, again, there's a lot of apps and programs our teachers use that can no longer be used on these old iPads. And, um, last year, the last discard list, actually, she just left, um, oh, no, she isn't. Um, she took, I'm sorry, you mean?
It's not coming out.
Oh, no, she took advantage of some of the product and donated it to a worthy cause. So, we'll see if the town hall has any reason for these. Other sources may want some pieces of equipment, and if not, Scott would like to remove the equipment and dispose of it to make room for storage reasons. Okay, do you have any questions?
I do want to, uh, just for, by education, uh, how this compares to the normal purge? Is it about the same every year?
Um, so we typically do it twice a year, and this, I, I think it's a little longer for this time of year only because it's mostly iPads, so it's an extensive list of old iPads, but typically.
It's about the quantity that gets rolled off every year?
Yep, and, and you see less and less actual MacBooks or computers, because we're incorporating those into our MCAS carts that we save for testing when they've been discarded, um, because, am I right, they log on? When I use the actual hard drive of the computer, we're logging on to.
Oh, the internet.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Um, but these are obsolete.
So, these are mostly like, for, for, there's a lot of old things here, but typically, for your life on an Apple?
Uh, so iPads, we've had, like, four or five years. Um, but again, these aren't accepting any upgrade to the operating system. And unfortunately, producers of apps and software play that game. You know, they, they build it to the current, and they no longer allow you to have it on older.
Right.
So, if you, um, see fit, we'd appreciate it if you vote to discard this, and we can get that ball rolling in person, Scott, to communicate with the town hall.
I know that we waive our usual practice of deliberating on this.
Give me a second.
Sure.
I'll second. Oh, I'll second. Any discussion about this? Okay, this is a roll call vote, Leir I?
Wilson I?
O'Dell I?
Gabri I.
So, that was just, thanks Evan, that was just to vote without waiting another month. So, now we need the vote on the discard list.
Okay, I'm going to vote, uh, to approve the discard list.
Your second?
Come, what?
Discussion.
Discussion. All right. Roll call vote, I'm so glad he's here, Leir I?
Wilson I?
O'Dell I?
Gabri I.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you all, and I would appreciate it if you have any organizations who think might be interested.
Well, how did that work out last time, I guess?
Oh, great, the mosquito actually printed a picture, they were very great, they're going to use it in English second languages.
That'd be great.
Do they want more, are they, is this particular one?
A I, and if, if the I doesn't want more, I know the Burmese, uh, population, etcetera, and so on.
Great.
So, there's a process, and we'll get to it, yes.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so, uh, we're moving into superintendent goals.
So, at the last meeting, we presented the updated district objectives, and there was a recommendation with regard to those.
Your, your, badminton thing.
Tell her to badminton.
Kamala, you, you forgot your.
She running after that.
Your net, your, I don't know what it is, it's like an athletic thing.
It's like Rumpire, but Lisa looking.
I think she came from.
She would've gotten home and cursed the day. I'm sorry, Jim, go.
That's all right. No, so, I want to start off with the district objectives, which are updated for each year. Um, there was a recommendation made last, at the last meeting, to make sure that, under objective three, which is ensure equity and excellence in learning. Under item one, it's increased use of effective, use and effectiveness of our tiered system supports. There was a request to make sure that we specifically mention number six here, which is, tier three, use feedback from entry plan of new director of student support services along with the report on the special education view conducted by West Ed, to identify and implement strategies to support improvement in our delivery of special education services. So, that was, that was included as a recommendation there. Everything else has remained the same with regard to that. Everybody was gonna think about the superintendent goals, um, the district planning goal to start. There was a recommendation that we should, as we vision our school for the future, what learning will look like, that we think about, you know, some of the constraints and challenges we have incorporated there. And one of those is, how do we manage fluctuations in grade level sizes? So, just to make sure that that is in our mind as we start the visioning process. It's not preeminent, right?
Right.
But it is something that we need to, to consider. And then additionally, under the district improvement goal, professional practice for the superintendent, the last paragraph on the page, there was a sense that we should incorporate some of the work of the, in support of director of student support services, and the work in special education, and that was itemized there. So, support the work of our new district director of student support services, and addressing needs of our special education students in department. Again, utilizing the feedback from the director's entry plan along with the report on special education viewed by West Ed, same language. So, I think that speaks to, just what we were talking about ten minutes ago, right? Like, the importance of the recommendation, and the follow-through, and making sure that we take the information that was given to us to help us improve, and we use it to do just that. I don't know if there's any other feedback, I think everyone's gonna cover.
We don't have silver, right?
No, we don't have silver, yeah. Thank you, sir. All right, then we move to the school committee goals. Everybody a chance to review them, do a review of them, or?
Wish. Are they different? Are they the same?
Uh.
Were you condensed down?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't really change much.
Yeah, little chart before, and I think go.
Yeah, little chart before, and I think, uh, visiting innovation is a little much out.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on these goals?
Uh, I just said how I think some were maybe just special. Just in innovation, you often do, uh, special, uh, I know we're saying open students, but if you can see, uh, specifically including that.
Okay, you don't think that's, you don't think that's covered in number one, which is special education?
This is covered in, uh, from the one, but.
You'd like it again?
I would, if I you just recommend.
Okay.
Different topic.
Okay.
From everything else.
Go ahead, Jim.
I, I just think there's a, there's a, there's a universal all that I think this would apply to, and if we, if we speak to a particular subset, then we, then we get into that space. And really, everybody should feel included as we vision for the future, it's for everybody's future.
I would agree, I agree, I agree with that.
All right.
That being said, non-ruthfully regarding special education, but would you? I'm sorry.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, people usually like think, oh, for all the, that's fairly, you know, they think of.
General population.
Special education, yeah.
Yeah.
I think in, in edu.
Generally, it's not general population, but if you say that, you know, it's covered, and, well, well, you are, of course, with it. Since we already built it, not been there.
I would say, I would say, I think, one of the things you hear a lot in education is all means all, right? So all is all, and we don't wanna start picking that apart, so I think it does, it applies to everybody.
I agree.
But now, I wanna talk about the visioning process, like, and this is something I've been talking about, Shannon about, as we've had the vision sessions, and we're so fortunate that people in the community are willing to step up for the visioning community, but also to help us as we really take a step back and think about what this process looks like. One of the thoughts was for us to really sharpen a school committee's objective around the visioning process, so I know Shannon's had the opportunity to ask a couple of questions of two of you, I've spoken, whatever, we haven't had the opportunity to speak, but the idea that we may benefit as a committee from having some time to process our initial perspectives and, and discuss what, there's a broad objective here, but we might wanna sharpen that a little more, so. But we have time is of the es- well, time is of the essence, and it's in shortage, and we're sitting, thinking about this process, which we'd like to have get going, but for us to have the opportunity to discuss that further, would mean that we'd have to wait till November something to have that conversation. And one of the thoughts we had would, maybe it would make sense if we could take the opportunity to schedule another meeting for the committee, put that to the committee, and we thought maybe the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth, and maybe we could do it in seven A, seven thirty in the morning, or six thirty at night, but just the time for us to focus on one, that one topic, and just take the information we've garnered, bring it together.
This is prospecting.
Yeah.
No, no, this is just.
Yeah.
The visioning. Yes, essentially, you know, uh, the interview with the four questions that I asked of each of you and Emma, and that you'll get your chance to have your say on it as well. Um, Jim and I were just gonna pour that into a table, so everybody could look and say, here's the week, you answered that, and it's for us to reflect on, and then, um, use that to look at and say, now can we come to some consensus? Just kind of in a similar way that we do everything else, we look at the board, and then we figure out, what do we really agree on here? And here are the things, we, I can just tell you frankly, that there are already things emerging, they're common among us. So it shouldn't be too big of a stretch to take those interviews and distill them into a couple of things, we can say, as a school board, we agree that what we'd like to see as the output of this process is X, Y, and Z. And really, have that articulated before we go to the larger community and say, these are our three things that we'd like as outcome. Now let's have at it, and start to get the creative ideas.
Good idea. It's too big a project to rush through.
Well, yeah, and, and I, I, Jim and I are both like, oh, more meetings, it's kind of, we're reluctant to ask, but it, but it is super important, and it does touch on so much that we all care about, including so, so many things to talk about tonight, that if we got an hour to do that, it would be great.
As opposed to waiting.
Yeah, and right, and then.
Rushing, so.
Yeah.
Could be, could be moved, items five, six, seven.
Oh, to that meeting?
To that meeting, and, and.
We could.
Pass warrants and vote, whatever, we gotta vote on, we get out of here.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, while we still have juice.
Which ones are those?
So that would be liaison reports. J K N.
Oh, we gotta do J K N.
Well, actually, yeah, let's move, I mean, I think. Do the ones we need to do.
What's that? Oh, yeah, we do actually have to.
Now, we can vote the EDCO, and we can vote the SPED council.
And the SPED council, that's what I was hearing, yeah, okay.
Now, we can vote, and we have to do warrants, we, I think we have to announce the warrants.
Yeah, to announce the ones.
So, but let me ask a question, well, two questions, one is, do we need to vote the committee goals?
Do we need to vote on the committee goals?
I think we did vote on it. I think we did, I think we asked you.
We did, we did, okay, and then just a question on the youth risk thing. We're not in this, right? This is other districts?
So, so, we aspire to be in there?
Right.
They took a vote, so we have to go through their process, they took a vote of their members to see if they would allow us to join. They voted and said they would allow us to join.
So this is explaining what it's.
This is explaining what it's about and seeing if we will become part.
So we could, yeah, I think we'll let you.
To the next meeting. Okay, um, everything, or do you wanna vote on the attorney?
I think you should vote on the, vote on the things you need to vote on.
Okay.
Do that.
So, we should vote on, um, do we wanna do the payroll warrants?
True.
Let me just read the, besides the ones that are listed on the agenda, we have additional warrants that have been signed since the agenda was posted. Accounts payroll warrant number twenty-six twenty for fifty-two thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Payroll warrant number twenty-one twenty for three hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and eighteen cents. And payroll warrant number twenty-five twenty for three hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay.
Big payrolls, are those the periods that they cover? That's just, that's not a month. Is that a month?
Well, there's a whole mishmack, right, they're, they're, because they're, they're not all, they don't all line up, right? There's some.
Let me see. I forget, I've been away from it.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's probably not.
I think in this, we have two.
Yeah, it's probably not, it's probably right. Okay.
Okay. So do we vote on those? Or just.
No, no, you're ready.
All right, so. So, um. Yeah.
So, um, this week, this week, this past month, on September twenty-sixth, Christine and Lori and I, uh, met with Marielle Suarda of Murphy Hesitumi Lane. She's a, she's, she's a SPED council, special education council, that we have had a few dealings with in the past. She's from, Andy Wahoo's our district, district's attorney, is with Murphy Hesitumi, and he recommended her for some work we had last year. We were thinking about changing attorneys, but we thought it made sense to wait till Lori comes on board, and because really Lori knew the person working very closely with this person. Lori came on board, I introduced her to Marielle, which really wasn't necessary, because Lori had worked with her in the past, and had a great relationship with her, and was really positive on that. But we wanted Christine to have the opportunity to meet with Marielle, we met with her.
She's impressive, she's been at this firm, this was her first job out of law school, and she's pretty much been there for the development of the special education, uh, legal department, so she's pretty, pretty impressive.
So, so, they sent the legal services proposal, it matches what we currently pay for Andy, and they're kind enough to break it down into tenth of the hour increments for billing purposes. So I think we should recommend that.
Yeah, we highly recommend, yeah. So, um, would you would like to propose a vote?
Sure. I move that we, where, is that what we're voting on SPED?
Yeah.
I move that we accept, uh, we got, we appoint, engage.
Engage.
Suarda. Suarda. Suarda, uh, as special education council for the Carlisle School District.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Leirai.
Wilsonai.
Odelai.
Labriai.
All in favor? Oh, that we did just do, okay, so we did that, okay.
If anyone's interested in the legal services proposals.
Oh, yes. And then we have, uh, the EDCO board, do you wanna explain that, Jim?
It's really difficult for me to explain, actually, so Nancy, but I think, at the EDCO, EDCO collaborative, we are members, we make up the EDCO collaborative. They have a board, and we can send a member from the committee and superintendent to the board, and one of them has to be identified as the voting member of the board. Traditionally, past three years, I've been the voting member of the board, so this time, it would make sense if you wanted to appoint me being a voting member of the board. Or if anyone else is interested, you go into the meetings.
And the advisory, you have to be the advisory member.
The advisory.
And what's that? If that only.
So there's two. His. No, the voting, the board, you could have a school committee who's a voting member, or, or the superintendent. Most districts have the superintendent being the voting. Many districts have committee members of ten. Now, the advisory, what's that alluding to, Nancy? I told you, I'd be hard pressed to explain.
Oh, yeah, was that me?
Is that a second, different appointment?
It can be the same person.
I would nominate Chemo Shady to be that person. Not out of being power hungry, just out of convenience.
I'll put that to Jim all over.
I think so.
All right, would somebody like to propose a vote for making Jim our EDCO board member and advisory member?
And propose we make Jim our EDCO board member and advisory member.
Second?
I second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Is it a roll call vote?
Well, if you want Mustafi in there, maybe you don't care.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that, it's because Evan wasn't here, okay, roll call vote, Leirai.
Wilsonai.
Odelai.
Labriai.
All right, great.
Emma?
Thank you, Emma, okay, so, um, the only other thing we wanna do is decide when we wanna meet.
Do you have a couple of dates?
I said the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth, I think those are Tues, is that Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
We can do morning, like, seven thirty? I don't know what's more, can be earlier, or whatever's, or evening, six thirty.
Do we go in costume?
That would be two days later, that would be the day after that.
I have an eight o'clock meeting already on Tuesday, in the morning.
What about Wednesday morning?
I can do that too, no, that's fine, I can do that.
Morning, thirty.
What time is morning, what time works? Seven thirty-eight? Seven thirty?
Emma, could you do seven thirty on the thirtieth? In the morning? Yeah, don't bring any baked goods.
Yes, bring baked goods.
Bring the forbidden chips. No, Emma, you don't have to.
You don't have to, but we like it.
Okay, um. So.
Thank you all.
What?
So is it an hour, hour and a half? Hour and a half.
Yeah.
I'd say an hour and a half at the, at the average.
Especially since we're gonna try to put those last few items on.
Yeah.
Wait, do we know, well, you'll have to figure out where and let us know.
I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Uh, can we hold that in the spot in the conference room?
I will, I'll see if it's open.
Oh, good, sorry, I missed it. Uh, okay, so, um, we will, uh, put the, the other two item, no, the youth risk behavior survey and liaison reports on to the, the meeting on the thirtieth. And the superintendent's report.
Unless we'll give that out.
No.
Thank you, Tim. Okay.
Or a water update.
Does anybody wanna vote to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
I, I didn't notice in the beginning, I think I missed public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, I should do public comments at the end, Carrie, you're right. So let's do.
Draw emotion.
Public comments.
I honestly should have probably broken the order, because you're right, because I've got to ask, but, um, I have a quick question about, um, Leslie Yanka and her position now as a teacher, and the, from what I know, lack of position of a math specialist. Um, how, how were those children who saw her last year getting their math in sharpshing?
So, interesting thing about the West Ed report, right? It did identify that as far as ELA and math in those spaces, right, we use data, assessment data, to see what students needed to get support, and what students didn't, and like, how you perform out of that specialized instruction, so that's a tier, that's a tier-two support, so it wasn't like a fixed group of children were getting that support. So, over each, every six weeks, students would, who needed it would get the support, and then they'd be assessed, assessed, and once they felt the support has bridged some gaps, they would move on, so it wasn't a consistent group of students, but the, the gist of your question is, what supports are available for those students, so we have, we did have, last year we had both Leslie and we had another tutor in place to support that, so we've identified some students getting a similar program with the tutor, but we can't cover as many students as we were able to do with Leslie, but that is a gap. That's a, that's a gap that we have, so our tier-two support has shrunk in that space.
So that was just, Leslie was just tier-two, and then not tier-three?
Correct, she did not provide special education services.
Okay.
And that's another, that's another item in the report, right? It's, it speaks to the, the robustness of our tier-two in those spaces, whereas in some places, you might get, your, your literacy instruction may suffer slightly going from tier-two to tier-three, which really shouldn't be the case, which is why we need to expand the training and make sure that we bring that, but because the specialist who's there is using, in literacy, has a certain background in education.
I was just concerned, because in, yeah, two years ago, there was a literacy specialist who left, and nobody ever replaced her, and I saw mine ten weeks without any.
No, no, yeah, so this is, that is not tier-three, does not specialize in.
Right, that was tier-three, so that's, I was just, when I heard that she had moved off, I was like, uh, are there gonna be a bunch of kids that aren't getting their, okay.
Yeah, that was not, that would be illegal, right?
Oh, that's. No, I appreciate.
I know, I'm sorry, you waited around for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Yes, Carrie, just because you loved us.
When will the West Ed report be released?
I would probably say, what's today, Wednesday, Friday? I just gotta extract a couple of pages, write a little something to put in there, and have it posted on the website, and then send some out to everybody that has posted on the website.
Thank you. Okay, um, would we like, anyone like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
I'll let somebody else do it, since mine failed.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Is Emma still there?
Yes.
I'm talking.
Oh.
Okay, so roll call vote, see Leirai, Le, yes, Leirai.
Wilsonai.
Odelai.
Labriai.
Thank you, Emma.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.